Good morning and welcome to the April 10th special meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. And we'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which is one nation, under the liberty and justice for all.
Are there any staff announcements today? Or agenda changes? Thank you.
Except I think we need to make an announcement.
Yes.
We have been rejoined by our beloved Peter.
Yes. So we're a little giddy today.
So Peter, you obviously know all of us here with the exception of Hector. You do know each other. Very good. Okay. So no introductions necessary. Welcome back, even if it's for a short period of time. We appreciate it.
Good to be back and
He says that
Three-year hiatus, so it's going to take me a while to catch up with everything that's going on. But hopefully I can help move things along as we progress.
If I remember right, Peter, one of the goals you had before retiring was get the zoning code done.
Get it started. Now I got to get it done.
Exactly. Kind of how my little break went.
It sort of mirrors the board's directive as well.
Okay, so there are no consent agenda items today and no informational items. Annette, is there anybody online who might wish to make a public comment not related to our discussion today? Is Annette here? Annette, are you there?
Yes, I can hear now. Thank you.
Great. I was just asking if anyone was online who might like to make a public comment not related to the discussion today.
Well, Tom is online. I'm not sure if he needs to make a public comment. I'm sure he's here for the zoning code update.
Okay, then we'll open and close the public comment portion and go ahead and pick up where we left off if we can only remember.
Yeah, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we managed to get through the entire remaining of the text. And now we have just a few cleanup items, one of which is, let me go to my list, animal keeping. We have had the discussion between RA and RR and the numbers of livestock allowed. We want to revisit residential dwellings in the TPZ. We've got some development standards that were drafted and by council. We've got dark sky provisions rolled into lighting and illumination. We have Mr. Infascino's memo of 4-2. In addition to new correspondence received, I think we want to revisit private airstrips in that HL combining district. And I have to forgive me, Tim Lattish, Commissioner Lattish provided us with his suggestions for edits on feedlots. I forgot to make copies for you, but we do have it posted online. And so when the discussion comes up, Annette will be able to share and put it up online for all of us to see. So I apologize.
You might mention that Muriel Zeller's
Yes, that was the other correspondence. So we have Muriel Zeller's letter. We have an additional letter memo from Mr. Infascino. And we have comments from Bob Garamendi as well.
And to make a decision on the limited exceptions section.
Yes.
That's my list too.
Yeah.
Great.
Everyone concur?
Well, I don't know that we covered the development and the TP zone.
Yes, she mentioned that.
Oh, okay. You went over my zone of consciousness.
She said it freely. Okay, so maybe, do you have a preferred order Martha or Gina?
Whatever you wish to tackle first. If you want to start in the beginning of the code, then I would say let's go ahead and take care of the TPZ residential dwelling issue and move our way forward.
That's what I was thinking.
Page 17 has sort of where the entry is.
Sorry, what was the page number?
Page 17 is the one that has the TP
Yeah.
Residential housing type.
So currently we have drafted specifically in the TP zone residential housing types, including single unit dwelling detached, of course accessory dwelling units, employee housing, family daycares, and then small residential care facility supportive housing and transitional housing. And the primary focus was, do we want to continue to permit outright residential dwelling units in the TP zone? Or do we want to further restrict them by use permit or simply prohibit them altogether?
So
Well, after reading all the stuff that we have and the consideration of the concern was by granting, as I understand it, permitting single unit dwelling detached, that would necessarily mean that we would be permitting transitional and supportive housing in the TP zone. After reading everything, my conclusion is to keep these permit indications as they are. Because even though the county might not be able to differentiate between normal single unit dwelling and transitional and supportive housing, the owner of the property in the TP zone is not going to be looking for this sort of housing. And that I think just the the natural course of events will end up without the problems that we were talking about. Having supportive and transitional housing in areas where there might be access problems and that sort of thing.
Hector, do you have anything to add to that?
Okay, I have a slightly different take, which is that actually the TP zone sets that residents could be allowed. And when you read it, anything that gets developed there has to be directly related to the uses on the site anyway. So, but my concern would be where someone chose to locate a house within that zone and our ability to actually provide any kind of fire services to them. So I could be persuaded to add an AUP to it, even for a single family residence, just to give the director the opportunity to look at the placement and the access roads and see if it makes any kind of sense. But if everybody else is fine with it just being permitted use, I'm fine with that also.
Well, I'd be fine with the AUP.
I would too. I would too, because it does affect so many other people than the owner of the
And we're only talking about the TV zone.
Only the TV zone.
And it's not prohibiting them. It's just telling them we want to make sure that
We just want to take a closer look, site-specific issues as
And I think
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we, okay.
AUP.
Is there anything Martha or Julie or Peter would like to add to that?
It was really just a policy call. I know that other counties, some restricted, some permit them outright. So it's just really a policy call. You know, it's been our practice here in Calaveras to allow them. But if we want to, if you, the commission, want to recommend to the board that you have some restriction. The only concern I have would be what would planning staff be looking at as far as review of AUP? Most of the standards that we have for new construction of housing is addressed in the fire code or the building code, there's access and those kinds of things. So I'm not sure what where the planning director or the staff would have authority to say, no, in this instance, it's not appropriate here without some further guidance. And I really don't want to load up the code with a lot of additional requirements. The idea here is how to simplify things.
So the things we discussed could be considered would be somewhat wider driveways. Making sure that it's not deep into the property where you really realistically, even if you meet all those requirements, that driveway the partner's not getting there to help somebody. Additional, maybe water storage onsite depending on, you know, what their situation is that out there. What are their communications ability? Just, and we did ask both CDF and Ebbets Pass Fire to come in and talk to us. And that was really all that they would prefer to not have anyone out there, but they realized that. So it's just, so maybe even just that what would happen would be to confer with whoever the fire authority is.
Okay.
That cover everybody's thoughts.
So that does not include employee housing, correct?
I've So I'm not clear. It seems like Julie responded to this at one time, whether employee housing is, is that an egg? Use, so is employee housing allowed by right if it was a part of the operation, the timber operations?
I, that question specifically, I don't know the answer to. If I did at one point, it's gone.
The section itself, the state statute isn't really clear that we're only talking about agriculture. But here, employee housing, of course, they also mentioned employees working on or off the property. Again, I think we're dealing with, look at the realities here. If somebody has a timber preserve, they're going to have employee housing. It's going to be for their employees. It's not going to make sense for anybody that's employed somewhere else.
Why don't we just put the AUP on both of them and
Well, and I'm also looking through some of the notes that I didn't have a moment to review before coming here. But I know that there's nothing, I mean, I don't believe there's anything that would prohibit or require you to provide the farm worker housing by right in the TPZ zone. And I think the issue under the government code for TPZ zones is whether or not a use is compatible. That doesn't automatically mean it's a by right use. It's about whether they can have a preserve and get the property tax benefits of that. And so anything, they provide there that there's a list of uses that are compatible and while residence for other purposes is not actually on the list. It is legal if it doesn't significantly detract from the timber use of the property. So I think, I don't remember seeing anything that would somehow impinge on your ability to decide how much review is required for the housing. You know, the only restriction is that there are some of those residential uses that automatically are allowed if you allow a single family residence. Yeah.
I'd be okay with an AUP on both of those items and
Including the employee housing then?
Yes. Again, I think it's not going to come up often, but if somebody had a good reasoning and if they were able to preserve their preserved status, maintain their preserved status and do it.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to check that one off.
We want to tackle the numbers of livestock in RA and RR?
Yeah, I'm just looking to see if there was anything in the
So everyone read the memo from Jesse Fowler, Ag Commissioner?
Yeah.
There's also some concerns that were expressed in the memo from Muriel Zeller.
What's your one X?
In addition, there's some suggestions for edits in the memo from Robert Garamendi dated April 4th.
Page 133.
Came to me last time.
Go ahead.
I really, I'm finding it very frustrating with the animal production. And if we're going to be moving RA into animal, into animal keeping. With animal production, it I thought maybe we were going to present it with an alternative that had something to do with animals per acre. To me, having just flat figures for these various types of animals just, it doesn't work for me. I mean, if you have 20 acres or you have 300 acres, you have the same amount and you can have the same amount of animals. I'm, you're not going to like this, neither is Martha. I'd like to have staff look at what other counties have done in this area on a heads per acre basis and bring it back to us. I realize we're trying to wrap this up, but right now it seems to me we're kind of, we're at loggerheads. Everybody agrees, the agricultural commissioner agrees that, that, you know, having too many animals on a lot really results in the animal suffering, lot suffering, the neighbor suffering.
So we have to remember that under the current code, under agriculture operations, there are no limitations. And that agriculture operations applies to AP, A1, RA, as well as RR currently. So with that understanding, we have to think, what are we really, what are we really concerned about at this point? Because what we're proposing now actually is further restrictive than what the current code currently allows in all four of those zone districts.
And while we're at that, the general nature, the reason you didn't list cattle and sheep or goats is what?
It's listed under, under animal production.
Well, we've got dairy.
Yeah, that's
We don't have hog farms.
Keep going.
Dairy, hog farms, hog farms, poultry, poultry.
Yeah, I don't see sheep or goats listed.
I don't see cattle listed. And I didn't know if that was, well, ranchers know what they're doing.
No, so if you look at permitted animal production operations in general forest, A1, AP and RA zones, the following animal production operations are permitted, the raising production and sale of livestock, including cattle, sheep, goats, pigs, horses, llamas, rabbits, fur-bearing animals, poultry, fowl, fish and other kinds of animal husbandry, including dairies and ranching. Those specific numbers came about as previously explained through Mr. Garamendi's explanation is that those particular numbers concerning, specifically concerning dairies, hog farms and poultry facilities all came below the threshold of kind of significance through the EPA. So those are areas for which you will find larger concentrations of animals in smaller areas just by simply the nature of the business or the operation.
And yet we've had people say, well, I have 10 cattle on my three acres or something of this sort.
So the problems that we're, the problems that we're having right now are the numbers, the large numbers of livestock in residential subdivisions. That's primarily the issue that we're having. I'm unaware of any problems that we're having on the commercial size operations in parcels that are zoned A1, AP. Maybe a few in RA just for the nature of the fact that you could have a smaller parcel. Generally speaking, five acres, but ranging from five to 20. So again, with the understanding that we currently have no limitation on those numbers specifically. I know that we're calling out the numbers for these specific operations, but in general, there are no, there are no limitations. And so it's kind of, you know, best management practices, whatever you can do. And obviously some rise to a nuisance level, which then generate complaints. But like I said, those are primarily noted as being issues in the residential subdivisions on smaller parcels.
This is a kind of a side question. Now, you look at the parcels and they'll say RA 20, but it's a 10 acre parcel.
Right.
What's the significance of the
The significance of the 20 was to eliminate further land division.
Oh, so
Why they chose 20 instead of 10, I don't know.
I said, but that's, but so that's
Right. It's a reference to minimum parcel size.
Like working lands. Okay. And why is this not heads per acre?
Why is Why was it never?
Well, now, proposed.
Because it won't solve the problem. Everybody's explained that because different property has different carrying capacities. If you choose a high one, then you're allowing, you know, the highest, that seems likely in the county. Then you still could have the exact same problem on parcels that really don't have that much usable area. And if you choose a low one, then you're unreasonably restricting someone else. I think we just need a general comment, which is what I was hoping to get from them. And I think that Jesse tried to address this, which is a general comment that all these numbers are subject to the appropriateness on the specific property.
Right.
So Martha might be able to craft that language.
Well, I see that we have on the top of page 135, in the amount not to exceed the reasonable carrying capacity of property. And I don't know if that was what was intended to try to address this issue. I will tell you that animal keeping is the third rail of zoning for planners. Any place I've dealt with, it's always been wrought with problems and issues as you just articulated. My recommendation at this point would be to not try to solve all of the issues on this today. You know, the purpose of this update was to bring our decades-old code into the 21st century. Try to make it more functional, more easily used by the public as well as the county. And we're not going to solve all the problems with this update. I would think that this is something that we might want to revisit in the future, just as we're doing with special events and short-term vacation medals and some of the other more controversial issues. We could get bogged down for months, if not years, trying to solve, you know, what is the appropriate number of heads of any type of animal on an acre. And we'll never solve that problem. We can come up with, you know, something. But I think that's a lot of work that I think will just sort of, we'll lose track of what we're trying to accomplish with this exercise. Which is to update the entirety of the code and leave some of those more controversial, more difficult issues for the future. We've scaled, as I understand it, we've already scaled it back to some degree
Right.
From what code currently allows in RR. And that is really where the problem is. I think with the RA and certainly the commercial agricultural zones, you know, the operators for the vast majority know what they can do on their property. They know what the carrying capacity of their land. They're not going to destroy their own livelihood by, you know, over allocating resources to, you know, the animals to the point where they don't have viable operation anymore. So again, and sort of coming into this new, I don't know all of the history of the discussion over the last, you know, several months.
Suggestion that's along the exact lines of what Peter
Come up with a reasonable solution today, move it on, and then with the understanding that this is one of those things we'll probably be addressing in the future. I don't want to be, you know, like, oh, we'll take care of that later kind of approach. But there are some things that we just don't want to lose track of the overall intent of what we're trying to accomplish with this is bring the code up to date, bring it to compliance with the general plan, and then work on some of these more substantive issues and individual ordinance updates. It's going to take some time and we really want to do some more research on what are other communities doing? What, you know, what do the stakeholders want and need? And the stakeholders in this case are both the ag community, those who want to have animals on their property and the neighbors who don't want to have animals on their next-door neighbor's property. So that's the balancing act.
I noticed that the language you were reading from 135, we have crossed that out about the administrative use permit approval. And I'd hate to go back and look at the record and find out that I was the one that said you should do that.
We will point fingers.
I just want to clarify, I think what Peter may be looking at is some revised language that he and I have been working on.
Sorry, Kyle. I'm sorry.
Suggest. So let me make my quick suggestion.
Commissioner Lozano points out that that language was shifted into the basic section, 17.25.070. So that's
Yeah. So I would really like, if there's, if there's really a need and a desire to have this conversation at some point, I really want an opportunity for all of those stakeholders to be part I, I really want an opportunity for all of those stakeholders to be part of the conversation.
Succeeding this.
Um, and so I think, you know, Martha and even, you know, Peter with our discussions about this yesterday, we feel pretty good about what we've done in rural residential and it would be interesting to see how, what kind of an effect that has going forward, uh, which we may be able to use that, uh, at some point in the future if we do decide to do a major overhaul of this section and really, um, you know, take into consideration changing, uh, the code as it, as it currently reads, um, at some point. But I would hate to think that, um, we're not including all of the people in the community, in the, in the county that need to be included in those conversations because obviously there's, there's nobody that's really attending these hearings. And, um, I think it's pretty important that if we're talking about making any major revisions to, um, which could have an impact on our number one industry in the county, that we include all of those, uh, folks, not only in the ag community, but as you said, other people in the county that may be affected by it as well.
Can I, can I ask a question? Let me make my suggestion and then you guys can all debate it. How about that we pretty much leave, like, I think we beat up the rural residential animal keeping section and we're all pretty much okay with that other than potentially limiting it to the, the animals per acre limit to the actual acreage available after their residential development. That would be my only.
As we drafted last.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
So the other thing would be to take RA and on RA parcels that are less than 10 acres or between five and 10 acres, treat them as RR for right now. And then pretty much put animal production, keep it the way it is with the addition of one, you know, warning statement that says, taking into consideration the size and conditions carrying capacity of the land. And then other than that, I think I agree that we need, this is going to turn into something much bigger. We're not going to get there today, but that will get us a new updated code that's pretty much consistent with what you've already proposed.
I, I fully agree with the, in fact, I think I fully agree. But particularly having the, the RA zones actually split. So 10 acres and below be into animal keeping and, uh, the rest stay in animal production. I think that makes a lot of sense. One concern that, that the agricultural commissioner brought up that I think it'd be good to address now is the concern that the way animal production is listed, it, you could have 200 heads of mature dairy cows and 300 heads of swine less than 55 pounds on the same parcel. I've come up with.
Well, the true likelihood of that, dairymen aren't hog farmers and hog farmers aren't dairymen.
No.
And I, last I checked, I don't think we have either one here.
Okay, okay.
Just one minute, you're worrying, let's Julie.
And I've lost a little bit of track. I wasn't, I'm sorry that I wasn't here when this guy, um, worked on last time. But in just skimming through, um, what's online now is the strikeout version, it seems like there is a hole where we have all, all of the typical farm animals are covered, cats and dogs are Title VI, but then we have what I don't see here, like we have, then a CUP for anything we haven't thought of. But I'm just wondering if people have a pet parrot, if they have a turtle, if they have a hamster. It's not in here. And so I, it looks like, as I read this really quickly, it looks like for animal keeping, all, anything that's not a cat or dog or not a farm animal requires a CUP. That's how it reads to me, just skimming through it. So I might be.
Where are you?
Um, for animal keeping? And I'm on, I just went to online.
17, 25, 06, I, animal keeping, it is under.
It's page 130.
June.
Yeah.
On 134 in my, on my document. It sounds like maybe a different document. It says additional animals. I think that.
The first statement is that, um, animal keeping is allowed pursuant to Title VI. Animals. So if Title VI allows you to have a parrot, you can have a parrot.
We're, that, but it says, I'm reading the top and it just says, the standards of this section apply to the keeping of animals in all zones other than these ag zones. And then it says the keeping of animals are instead, in the other zones are subject to Title VI. So, so that Title VI regulates how you care for the animals? So I'm just, I mean, again, this is a skim and maybe I'm the only one who reads it this way, but it seems like if somebody was upset with their neighbor's parrot, they could say, huh, you need a CUP. That's sort of.
Are you sure that Title VI doesn't say that you can have?
I'm not sure, as I sit here.
So that's the thing, that is, that would be a problem with Title VI, so.
I, yeah. So it is a little bit of a gap.
Well, isn't it covered in subdivision A? It may have, it may not, you know. It is.
In what subdivision?
In A.
It, it is, but it, but it, it actually excludes dogs and cats from what they're, and but, and what Julie is saying, but it doesn't exclude, it should perhaps be more clear to say, except dogs, cats and other pets. You know, because, and then just let them be covered by chapter six, whether they are covered in detail or not. Because there are other animals that aren't animal keeping, which this is like more outdoor sort of livestock-ish things. And, you know, a pet or your parrot buggies inside, we don't really have any interest in making rules about. Is that, Julie, is that your?
Well, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we don't create an opportunity for neighbors who dislike each other to, to find a, an accidental gap in the code. And then we find, oh, well, yes, if we don't state it, it's, we have permissive zoning, so it's prohibited. And I don't, as I sit here, I don't know that Title VI affirmatively says, here's the type of animals you're allowed to have in your house.
And other pets?
Yeah, I mean, the pets thing is so broad that it's like my, my elephant, you know. Maybe common, commonly kept, I mean, I know it's not perfect, but maybe commonly kept pets?
Yes. Yes, that would be.
Commonly kept.
I think that would be.
It's not great.
Time for our purposes right now to move forward.
Okay.
I do think, I mean, we keep, uh, the, we keep the except dogs or cat language.
Yeah.
In A, but add, uh, the keeping of other domestic animals, comma, including dogs and cats, is subject to Title VI.
Yeah.
That at least gets dogs and cats taken care of. But I think the commonly kept as pets, uh.
I know for lawyers, that's a nightmare, but it's just, I don't know how else.
For our purposes, I think we, if that's a reasonable solution for right now.
So what?
It doesn't really say anything about, it, it just kind of says the same thing we said here in.
No, it takes care of dogs and cats pretty well, but that's, that's really.
And it mentions all these other domestic animals, but not, not the kind of indoor pet sorts of animals.
Yeah. And yet, if we say, I was thinking indoor pets, but, you know, our, our cat has an outdoor cat.
Well, I guess I'm thinking mostly what, what came to mind, because I, when I bicycle on Gil's track, there's, you know, it's, the parrots are really, really loud and people come, take them on their shoulder and they, and they come out. And I know that they probably do cause concern. I don't know that you have any interest in dealing with that in the zoning code. But I'm just saying, um, that's, if you didn't intend, somebody, at some point, somebody will say, my, my neighbor's bird's driving me crazy, they need a CUP.
Well, then, then, don't we get into the, you've educated us now on nuisance. Don't we get into that question as to whether?
I mean, that could be.
You know, it's a, an allowable type.
Sure, no, I'm not saying that we should regulate every type of use. I'm just saying that I don't know the planning would want to have to deal with the parrot CUP that they didn't mean to put in.
We'll let animal control do it.
So I think conceptually we have good agreement, right?
It's just how the draft does.
So conceptually, you guys got it? Commissioner LaHaddish, you want to share your language that you?
Oh, yeah. Um, as I said, the agricultural commissioner raised the question about, you know, combining, he, he placed the combi, we're back on animal production, combines various types of animals. And in my normal convoluted style, um, which I hope can be edited, giving, giving effect to that concern, the agricultural commissioner, in the, in subdivision A of 17.25.070, right after what's underlined and, and in red now, animal production operation, I'm going to just read this out and then we can discuss it and then I'll dictate it if it's appropriate. Animal production operations with more than one type of animal, of listed animal being, uh, produced shall have their quotas split proportionately.
So I think that is her concern, but because we haven't limited all, a bunch of other types of animals and we're already relying on the common sense of the producer.
We don't need that.
The dairymen, the hogmen. It feels right to me, but I'm not sure that these numbers were developed with that idea to be used in that manner. And unless I understood that, I would be reluctant to say that.
And I think before we get done with this, I think we ought to go through Bob Guaramendi's list, you know, before we can move on, because he has.
The vast majority of his list were things that we actually addressed during the meeting, so.
Well, uh, let's see, as far as.
We talked about all these accessory uses. And we talked about the, the stream and wetland setbacks.
Yeah. Okay, and now.
Feedlot is the one that we have yet to.
I, uh, eventually I would like to discuss the feedlots, but that's.
Feedlot descrip, definition?
Definition.
Yeah, so maybe just put that on our list to do.
Yeah, we don't need to deal with that now. And his other things really are sawmills and services and stuff, so yes. I think we've taken care, oh, he cites RA4 zones. RA parentheses four, close parenthesis. That doesn't ring a bell?
I don't know what that is.
It, it appears more than once.
Yeah, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if it's not referencing, um,
It's.
an additional restriction, a limitation.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if that does not ring a bell with you, whether.
Well, we'll check it out.
Okay, well, we'll deal with his comments later on.
So Gina and Martha, do you feel like you, I think you've already handled some of these items. Do you feel like you could take this discussion today and meld in this little bit of additional direction and have something by tomorrow?
Uh, yes.
I think we're proposing very little language changes other than what you.
Yeah, the shift, the, the splitting of RA between the two, I think is key. That was really good.
Martha's not speaking. She's thinking.
Well, I was looking at what the note for might be, and I think it's a limitation that says limited to logging contractor equipment and materials. That's what I was trying to figure out what his for in the letter was. But short answer to your question, yeah, I agree with Gina.
Good.
Okay.
Great.
Let's move on.
Quickly.
Before someone looks closer at anything.
Thank you for your input, Peter.
Yes. Okay, what's next, Gina?
Uh, feedlot? You want to take care of the definition of feedlot?
Sure.
So, um, um, Annette?
Yeah, she's got it.
Does she? Oh, she's good. She's reading my mind.
She needs to make it a little bigger if she can.
Yeah.
Oh, it is kind of tiny, huh? How's that?
What I did here was Bob Guaramendi suggested we use a term other than feedlot. And I kind of favor using something that people will at least have a visual concept of what we're talking about. So that when we say feedlot, uh, people have a, an idea of what it is. If you say confined animal feeding operations, it, it's a little more hazy. What I tried to do was in this proposed definition, which we, there is a definition of feedlot on page 248, but I've tried to combine Bob Guaramendi's concerns and his, what feedlots should not include, um, in one, uh, definition. And, oh, it just disappeared from our screen. Come back, come back.
Come back.
There you go. So this is saying, feedlot, confined animal feeding operation where cattle and/or other livestock are concentrated numbers per acre without the limitations of section 17.25.070, animal production, and fed without reliance on grazing prior to slaughter. Does not include livestock auctions and sales yards, places where feeding is incidental, hens for weaning or doctoring, and locations used for youth products such as 4H, Future Farmers of America, and, and I would change the wording of the last part, and the Grange Youth Fair Program. That's what the Grange calls their program.
So I like this, Martha, but then we need, um, we'll have to come up with, um, uh, sales yard and, uh, and livestock auctions as a separate use.
Yeah. You might, and you might check, uh, let's see, Food and Ag Coach, Food and Agricultural Code, section 18353, has a definition of stockyard.
What was that?
It, 18353 of the Food and Agricultural Code. That might be useful in, uh, in taking care of the livestock auctions and sales yard. Yeah.
And where do you want to allow livestock auctions and sales yards and under what permit?
That's a really good question.
Yes, we're going to have to go back and then assign those.
Well, once we have definitions, we probably have a better idea. You know, and, and these, that's a term used by Bob Guaramendi. I have absolutely no objection with you talking about Bob Guaramendi and getting a clearer picture of exactly, he was, he was very clear that they should not be included in feedlots.
Well, okay, so let's just assume they're separate. Are we going to, are we going to allow them in zones differently than? Are we going to allow them in zones differently than we currently do feedlots? Because if the answer is no, then I think including them in the definition is perfectly acceptable.
Well, that's...
If we find that they're compatible in terms of where we're allowing them...
And that's basically what we said before. Said before slaughter or transport.
Well, and I think that...
I would suggest that you talk with Bob Guaramendi. I don't know why he was so adamant.
Well, I think he's just thinking in terms of it's... A sales yard is, and a livestock auction is different than a feedlot, where, you know, you've got higher, you know, volumes of traffic and people, you know, coming and going from a sales yard, and where you don't have that on a feedlot situation. But again, if we're not going to allow sales yards and livestock auctions in other zones, then we are allowing a feedlot, then I don't see any harm in allowing them to be merged together in the same definition. But I like the clarification that the feedlot is not your typical cow-calf operation where you're weaning animals and, you know, you're maybe keeping them in a confined area for a certain length of time. And I think, generally speaking, we all understand that, but I can understand the concerns of the ag community in that, you know, they don't want something to ultimately, you know, cause, you know, a problem with how they operate their livestock operations.
And I, right now, I would say, well, maybe keep the same restrictions on livestock auctions and sales yards as we have in feedlots. But I...
Yeah.
I don't have a clear picture. I adopted his language without a clear picture of a sales yard. That's something that just brought in...
So, we're allowing them currently, as currently defined, in A1 and AP as a permitted use or an administrative use on... Whoop, where'd it go? Is it parcels less than five acres or twenty? Yeah, on parcels less than twenty acres. We're allowing them as a conditional use in the M2 zone. So, if we think that we would otherwise allow a auction, a sales yard or, you know, livestock auction somewhere other than those three zones with some other different type of permit...
Well, I'm not sure... I'm looking right now at page twenty-one, Land Use Regulations, Resource Zones. There's feedlot at the top. And...
A1 and AP.
A1 and AP, and I put it with a conditional use permit. I think a feedlot is a remarkably...
Different.
Different and difficult thing to deal with. And so, I think conditional use permit would be appropriate in A1 and AP and not allowed in the others.
So, conditional use permit for feedlots as well as for livestock auctions?
Well, I, again...
I'm talking only feedlot right now, I think.
If we can come up with a definition of really what we mean by livestock auctions and sales yards, that maybe it's not as intensive use of the land and less intrusive on possible neighboring properties, so...
Well, but you have to remember where the A1 and the AP zones are also located. They're in our resource production designations, which are not, generally speaking, adjacent to your residential communities.
But if you have a... I mean, we bicycled through Dodge City with feedlots, you know, for miles, and you could smell them for tens of miles away. So, it's... That's why, for a feedlot, I think we need a conditional use permit. Again, I think if you check with our livestock experts like Booster and Guaramendi, you might get an idea of just what they have in mind with livestock auctions and sales yards, why they don't think they should be grouped with feedlots, and maybe we...
I think they need less restrictions on them. Just allow them in the agricultural zones like we were proposing to do feedlots and then add that slightly, now that we have a feedlot definition, that is, I think, leaving, perhaps having the conditional use permit on the feedlot would make sense and leave it basically in the zones that we... Although you'd have to double-check that.
So, put livestock auctions and then sales yards.
And just allow...
And have them, well...
As currently allowed as a feedlot, but then separate out feedlot?
The way it was listed for feedlot made sense. It was P slash A footnote five. So, yeah, right, without knowing what I'm talking about, I think that would be a good thing, is that it makes sense to make livestock auctions, sale yards, either one category or two, and keep them with a P slash A footnote five.
And then just make it a conditional use permit, so an administrative use permit for the feedlot.
Feedlot, yeah.
Same zones?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think their biggest concern was more that we were lumping normal activities into a restricted...
Well, I think they're noting that they're different.
Yeah.
But what I'm not getting is where you think they're appropriate versus not.
Well...
Right, let's see.
He's still saying...
Go ahead.
I think I understood it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the auction or sales yard would be allowed as currently listed here in the A1 and AP zones as either permitted or an AUP, depending on the requirements under five, you know, note five. And then the feedlot would require a conditional use permit in those same zones.
Right. I think it would only be an issue for the sales yard if they were just getting so much traffic. You know, they were doing it every weekend, not twice a year.
And Martha, Gina, did you catch the slight change in language at the very end of mine?
Um, yeah, you want to...
The Grange...
Grange Youth Fair Program.
Okay.
Grange Youth Fair Program instead of Youth Range.
Okay.
Hey, check that.
One more thing.
While we're there, shall we go through Bob Guaramendi's? We have, you know, the sawmills.
How we resolved those last time.
Small-scale sawmills should be a permit use in A1, AP, and RA zones. We have sawmills permitted in GF and TP.
I think we have to remember that what these permitted uses, the use types are, are the primary use of the facility, of the lot. Someone is doing incidental, you know, they've got a little portable sawmill. They cut some timber for, you know, their purposes. You know, they've got some downed trees on the property. That's different than a lumber mill, you know, Sierra Pacific Slumber Mill in Camino. I don't think we need to... I think that the, you know... I don't know if we have language in there that, you know, essentially allows those accessory uses. You know, it certainly does under the, you know, what we just talked about with feedlots, but I'm assuming that same kind of incidental use for a...
For any of these...
For any of those resource zones, that would be considered. It's just like if someone wants to develop a lumber, you know, a lumber mill, a sawmill, that's a different picture than just someone who's got a portable sawmill, you know.
And that's what Martha explained last time, and we read through that accessory use section and decided that any of these things could be an accessory use so long as they remain subservient to the primary agricultural operation.
I think we went as far as suggesting that they wanted to trade services from the neighborhood. It might need something...
And then no one would need anything.
It was still permissible.
Right, right.
But also, then when we get to the servicing of large vehicles on somebody else's property, that would...
Same issue. You know, you've got a big piece of farm equipment. You need to call out the serviceman to fix your harvester. You can do it. But if you've got a business that's, you know, operating on your farm, that is a, you know, auto repair or farm equipment repair business, that's a different story.
But it's okay, as long as it's small and is subservient to the primary use. That's the discussion we had last time. So, you could even have a little business that you, you know, have six customers in the neighborhood that you do... They bring their equipment to you. You're real mechanical, and you could fix their harvester.
Yeah.
Then, trying to just wrap up the Guaramendi suggestion. Veterinary services, I'm not sure if he means having a vet...
Either one is fine, though, as an accessory use.
Even a vet service, a vet office.
You could be, have a veterinary... Yeah, and you could have... It would be great on agricultural land because you could have three horses there that are being kept overnight, you know?
And, but, and you could be offering veterinary services to neighbors, et cetera.
Yes, exactly.
And maybe farm supply stored?
I would say, as long as it was minor and small, because maybe you sell hay.
But what, does it work on that one?
Feed and farm supply stores are allowed with an administrative use permit in A1 and AP. Mr. also...
That's on page twenty somewhere.
Oh, he's asking to include it in RA
Yes.
with a CUP, but...
So, when we, I just, with minor, using a word like that where everybody can disagree on what counts as minor, I'm just worried about getting bogged down in disputes over that.
Where do we say minor?
It was just being discussed.
I thought we're just saying, as long as it's not the primary use of the...
So, if I have a small manufacturing plant on my property and I use it on weekends to make cement trucks, that's okay? I'm just, there's, I'm just trying to figure out when we get... I just was wondering if we need a little more granularity when it comes to the type of business.
Well, you couldn't have a cement plant without all sorts of...
I mean, I just, I don't know, I was making it out of choices.
No asphalt either.
I mean, I'm just trying to... I just was asking if you really wanted to leave it as open as minor.
This is where we want to address the accessory use definition.
Thought we looked at it last time, but...
No, I know, but I didn't...
We can look at it again.
Is that what we're talking about?
All right. So, the feed and farm supply, Gina, you just said that the request is for it in RA.
So, we currently have it drafted as an administrative use in A1 and AP. Mr. Guaramendi's request is that we include it as a conditional use in the RA zone, but...
He's suggesting a CUP in the RA.
Right.
For all these things or...
No, for...
For the feed and farm supply.
Sure, it's up near the top on page twenty.
I have it.
Should be permitted, yeah, as used with our... I don't know, I have some reservations about that.
I think with this, any of them could be fine in RA with a CUP if we had a minimum parcel size for them.
Well...
It's pretty hard to have it be a secondary use on a small parcel.
That's why we need to have some, either A, either CUP.
Yeah, well, I would think a CUP.
Well, I mean, we already have...
On RA.
A specific limitation number... Well, actually, no, I apologize. That's an administrative use permit approval required on parcels of less than twenty acres, but...
So, it could be a CUP on RA parcels. It's hard for me to really...
Yeah, I would just...
Remember that the residential agricultural zone is one where both residence and ag uses are on equal footing. And so, and the reality is, I think, most of the RA zones are used more for residential purposes than ag purposes.
I agree.
And I think it's just going to be, I don't know, I'm just envisioning it to be very incompatible with surrounding areas. I mean, because if we think about where we've applied RA, you know, they now... The zoning now is compatible in all of our rural transition designations, which is also rural residential. And a lot of those are subdivisions, and they're, you know, they're primarily large lot residential parcels.
Right. I was just wondering, do we have RA parcels that are very large out there that are more mixed in and just kind of...
We could, but I...
And if someone really wanted to develop a feed, you know, a feed and farm supply store, they could always apply for a rezone.
Right, that's what I was just going to say. If they have a large enough parcel that we would think it was appropriate, they would apply for a rezone.
Right.
Apply for a rezone. And I think we need to remember, we don't want to start adding too many things that aren't, you know, already allowed.
I would, okay, so let's, I mean, giving all due respect to Bob Guaramendi, that one, we won't buy. I would point out that on page seventeen, the definition of the RA zone has been changed, proposed to be changed. So, the RA zone is intended to be a zone that accommodates both residential and agricultural uses. And I'm questioning whether we want to say places an equal emphasis on both residential, but back to what the current language is.
It says personal scale, farming and ranging, and larger residential parcel. I think it's... I don't object to saying equal emphasis so much, but I'm not sure it's necessary. I think this new definition actually, or explanation.
You're suggesting it should be an equal footing, were you weren't?
Well, I think I was referring back to the old zone script.
Equal emphasis on...
And that, to me, is an easier thing to grasp than accommodates both. I just wanted to raise that in case we wanted to change.
But I think Gina's point was that if you look at the general plan land use designation, you look at what's actually out there on the land for most RA zone properties, it's primarily residential, large lot residential, but it does allow some agricultural component on it that where the RR is strictly residential, it also allows some agricultural component, but it's much more restricted. And so, I think, you know, there's a gradation between, you know, AP, A1, RA, RR that goes from, this is agricultural land, and expect to have noise and dust and smells as you move down to RR.
Less so.
I think...
I'm comfortable with what we have.
Yeah.
With what's proposed.
Yeah.
Good, I just wanted to phrase it. Okay.
Okay, are we... Maybe you have a lot.
Public comment? Public comment?
Ah, public comment! Hi, this is Tom, Tom Fasino, Power's Planning Coalition. Before we leave Mr. Guaramendi's letter, he brings up forest improvement programs, which if you look on, I think it's like page, what is it? Twenty-one of your zoning code update. It's only allowed currently in TP and GF zones. And he makes a good point that if you look at the range land out there, much of which is in AP and A1 zones, a lot of it includes oak woodland. And the state is financially supporting oak woodland preservation at this point. And so, I think what he's saying here is, let's not allow, let's allow this in these AP and A1 zones. As you recall, his point when he was here was, we're trying to make these agricultural operations more financially viable. As you recall, his point when he was here was, we're trying to make these agricultural operations more financially viable, not less financially viable. And so some people are looking at those opportunities to manage their land in a way that also benefits their bottom line. So I'm wondering if we could change that so that forest improvement programs could be allowed in the AP and A1 zone.
Thanks, Tom, for pointing, I just, I missed that when I was going through his memo. But I agree with his suggestion, but why not also in, in RA?
Yeah, what's, what's the definition of a forest improvement?
That's on page 248.
Yeah, that's what I want to look at. Yeah, I think it should be allowed on any of them.
Yeah, I agree.
There's no reason to restrict it.
What's the meaning?
Thank you, Tom. So are you saying you want to allow it in RA as well?
Yeah.
I don't really know why you wouldn't. I don't think you're going to see a lot of people applying those programs, but.
Five acres not gonna have a forest improvement program, but a 20 acres, right?
Yeah. I was thinking maybe we would look at private airstrips instead of lingering.
Forgotten that it was, so.
So I just want to just make sure I'm clear on that. You're gonna add as a permitted use forest improvement program in the RA zone?
Yeah.
What about the A1 and AP?
Yes, those two. All the resources across the board.
Okay, got it.
You guys are generous. Good comment.
I just, I just didn't hear that, so I wanted to make sure I understood.
Let's find the airstrips.
Yeah, I don't remember what the lingering issue was.
Oh, it was all kinds of issues.
There were zones, right? There was a, there were two types of air, air related zones.
So, yeah, things have just been kind of like, you know, piled on over the years. So from the, the research that I did do, the height limitation was applied to not only the public airport, but it was applied to private airstrips and private airports, which we don't actually have, at least none that I've found in the county. We do have some private airstrips that have been approved by a CUP. I think I've noted those, ones in Burson and ones up in the, I believe railroad flat area of the county. Whether or not they're still in operation, I have no idea, but nevertheless, they were approved at one time. We had previously, after the airport moved to the current location, they developed, the county developed an airport special plan. And I think at that point, then we rolled in the AO, which is the airport overflight. And that directly kind of pointed also back to the height limitation. And I think there was just kind of, for some reason, maybe no desire to combine the two and, and, and make it good. So the AO overlay is really the overlay zone that is supposed to be applied specifically to the Calvers Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan Designated Area of Influence. So that is all the area within a certain geographical, you know, distance around the airport. And, and so the land use within that area is further regulated through the AO overlay zone. That's all good. And then we realized that we still had the HL. So at that point, we thought, oh goodness, I think we need to maintain it because we've got these other properties that are zoned HL. So if you recall, we're having all this discussion about what does the HL do? And we kind of, without really understanding where we've applied the combining zone or now as we're referring to them as overlay zones, we had this whole kind of like assumption that the HL was applied to lands surrounding those private airstrips that were owned by the owner of the airstrip, when in fact that's not true. So what I did find is that the zoning was specifically applied to the parcels for which were affected by the use permit itself. Didn't include properties around the private airstrips that were owned by other people. So now the question is, do we really need the HL overlay for the purpose of regulating, you know, private airstrips, knowing that they still have to comply with FAA regulations, which also includes height limitations and things like that? So, you know, Peter and Martha are kind of having this conversation of, well, maybe we need to go back to what our original, and, you know, thought was is that maybe we don't really need the HL overlay at this point.
That would certainly simplify.
Right.
Sounds.
Yeah, I, because my concerns were all about imposing restrictions on the neighbors.
Right, right.
Whole thing, so.
So.
Yeah, it's nice to feel like you.
Eliminate this overlay zone.
I'll have to defer to Martha and Gina for this, I have not, I don't do the precoming today yesterday.
She dropped, she dropped her names.
Sorry.
We can talk about it, okay? I just, I know enough about the.
That's fine.
Can I just, so what, the, the concept would, if I understand everybody correctly, is that a CUP would continue to be required? Point you're saying, one of the conditions of the CUP is you're going to have to operate this in compliance with FAA rules. And it's up to the applicant to figure out that they have enough land or leases or whatever else to say.
Obviously, all of that will be, will be taken into consideration with the conditional use permit process. I think if we didn't require it as a conditional use permit, something like the overlay would, and you know, and those specific standards would be, you know, very much needed and applicable. But I think with the idea that we're going to, if, if we ever get another one again at some time in the future, be processing a CUP, we will absolutely roll in all of the, you know, the experts in, in respect to aviation and, and they will have to comply. And, and of course, reviewing parcel size and surrounding uses and all of those things will be taken into consideration when we're reviewing the, the CUP.
Wouldn't it be that, that, not just looking at the existing neighboring uses, but whatever those neighboring uses.
Have the potential of, sure.
Have a potential, the conditional use permit would say, well, you're gonna have to have more, more area. We can't give you this condition.
Correct.
Where, where is that in our, in our tables?
Where is airstrip? The private airstrip?
Is it in the, is it in our table?
You mean the HL overlay?
No, just under the, all the tables.
The use, the use. Oh.
And does that include?
Yes, personal landing field.
Does that include helicopters also? I'm curious.
I believe so, let's look at that.
Or, or helicopters permitted?
Yeah, it's under transportation, yes.
Personal landing field.
Okay, so, but we should put that as a C and go across the line.
Well, under the administrative use permit, we will still have.
I mean, administrative use permit, we would still have to address all of those issues associated with flight safety.
That would be sufficient.
Yeah.
Okay, so the way it is.
That's all in resource zones where they.
Yeah, it's the only place that they're at.
It's less, and where else would you have one?
Yeah, now, but, but, well, should it be listed in the other?
They're not listed when they're not used.
I have a question, are there restrictions on helicopters? Are they the same as airports or can you?
There's a definition differently, with a separate heliports.
246 has a.
Are they lumped in with airports or can you?
246.
Land a helicopter anywhere?
No, it's regulated either, if not separately, it should be rolled into that definition that we're talking about.
And where am I gonna locate?
246, that's the age. Look at, look at page, I'm trying to find page 246. Heliports is separately, personal landing field, non municipal airstrips and glider ports, airports and heliports are defined. But since we only list personal landing field in the tables, it's, heliports are permitted, is that right?
Well, having a definition wouldn't make it permitted, we'd have to have it listed in the use table.
You have to have it listed to, to have it permitted?
Right, yeah. But, but it wouldn't make sense for us to include definitions of things we don't actually have any regulations for.
No, we've gotten away from that.
No, airports and heliports are allowed with a conditional use permit in the public zone as well as the industrial zones.
Yeah, that, that's great.
Well, I think we might consider whether it should be appropriate in A1 or something like that. I'm deferring to, you don't remember here?
Yes.
What would you?
But airports and heliports are different than a personal landing strip that's used for an agricultural operation or in conjunction with a pers, some personal use.
Right, so a heliport is an actual official landing thing. People routinely land a helicopter on a personal landing strip, and I think that's allowed.
Under the definition of personal landing field, it includes a helicopter.
Yeah, right.
Fixing aircraft or helicopter landing operations.
My question is, do you have to be in that area in order, or can it be, you can land it anywhere there's space to land?
Can it be, can it be an accessory?
I don't know, we can't.
I can't imagine that, you can land your helicopter anywhere you want.
You need to contact the FAA. So having, I, I, a long time ago, I had a friend who was a helicopter pilot. They had a personal landing strip on their property and they landed the helicopters on the landing strip. They also landed that helicopter in many other places. Like a, a parking lot on a Saturday that was empty. You know, this was just a routine and I don't.
Well, we're not gonna address that by Saturday.
That's, I mean, they did it very simply.
So that falls as an accessory use or a?
I think it falls as a nuisance.
I mean, as far as, okay, say there was an unnamed planning commissioner who has a ranch. And he called out, his friend, his friend wants to land a helicopter to bring emergency supplies or something.
For fun.
Or for, or what? And if, if it's not a regular, it's not allowed.
No, I think if it happens once in a while and the neighbors aren't complaining, no, it's just no harm, no foul.
We're not gonna provide a legal opinion of such things. We're really talking permanent land uses. So this is a, this is a, this is a ongoing permanent use of the land in which, you know, this is going to be a regular occurrence. So whether or not you can do this occasionally, you're gonna have to seek higher authority. That's not addressed to the. Somebody other than us.
Large enough property, that is probably not an issue, but.
And also, I mean, there are designated emergency landing.
Yes.
Area for helicopters, you know, for.
All up and down the highway.
Yeah, and, and, and ambulance services, fire districts and this sort of thing have areas that they've designated, that doesn't have to be covered in here.
Okay, well.
Right.
Partially answers.
Okay, so, so let's talk about the next item. Should we look at the limited exception?
Yeah.
Language and decide? Yeah, you know, Paige was that on. I think we have a whole new piece, it's not on a page, it's the section that you wrote.
Well, yeah, but I think it's.
Doesn't get any. I'll just leave, keep in mind the caveat that I wrote it really quickly with, with very little time and it was just throwing it out there.
Page 200?
Mm-hmm.
It was a development standard.
Yes, it's in development standards, I believe.
As I was unclear Julie as to what you provided, whether it meant to take the place of the entire.
I'm sorry, were you on 200?
Page 200. And then it, it's the memo from Julie that said discretion to deviate from development standards had.
So when I, as I recall the discussion, again, I wasn't at the last meeting, there was a back and forth about whether we would do limited, allow for limited exceptions at all given the slippery slope to waiver. And, and if we do it, or to variances, and, and if we do it, what are, are we gonna be able to do it within some bounds that is, you know, that will sort of distinguish that from what might otherwise be a variance? And so I just threw, I, I was asked by the commission, as I understood it, to throw something together, which, and I know I didn't have time to figure out where the code section, I realized that the code sections had been changing and in front of me I had something else. So I, that was, you know, and it's certainly a policy call. For you, it was just my best effort at trying to find something that might work for that in between, not a variance, but some flexibility to change standards.
Would that be a replacement for 17.34.010, limited exception?
That was my understanding.
What we had asked her.
So I, I, to my knowledge, I wasn't just doing this, I was doing this because I.
But I didn't understand that would fit in the, in the proposed code of whether it would replace this, this entire chapter, 17.34. And if so, where, what would be our, would we, would we want to keep some of it as far as purpose and applicability, review authority and that sort of thing?
So we, we worked on that briefly last couple of days. And so the language that Julie came up with would go under 1734.020 applicability. The purpose section would stay, there'd be, some of the review authority would be changed and the procedures would stay and the rest would be deleted.
So I think you're, might be saying the same thing I'm saying, it's like get rid of this waiver limited exception chapter and just make this, give this authority to the planning director, very limited.
Yes.
Yes, I, I'm all for that.
Okay, but in that, in that, with this, would go the parts of?
Yeah, the appropriate parts of chapter 1734 would stay, but the, the substantive portions about findings and conditions and all that would be replaced with what Julie has come up with. And I, I am comfortable with that. And I.
What, there's one major change is that Julie upped the 10% deviation.
Totally, I will, because I was here, I only did that because we can do 10%. I was trying, I think when I last left, I felt like the majority wanted more flexibility and the higher we go, the worse it gets in terms of, I see Michelle has this try, it's a policy, it's a policy call. Obviously, the more restrictive it is, the less anybody could say it's a, it's a variance, a variance in disguise.
Yeah, as we, it started off being proposed as 20%.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And we changed it to 10%.
That's fine.
So, okay.
But then the circumstances under which it could be allowed was narrowed and so that's where I think the feeling was, the amount could be a little bit more. the amount could be a little bit more because the specific circumstances in which this, something could be deviated was narrowed. So it wasn't.
So could we, instead of all of this, just in the variance section, have an authority of the planning director to, to allow minor deviations up to, and only for these purposes, you know, the accessibility.
I wouldn't put it in the variance section.
Okay, that's what in the section, but trying, I don't know, I'm just trying to not make it be. Having a chapter that says, here, here's your way around this is really feels all.
Well, it expressly said that originally, right?
Better than waivers.
If you can't meet the waiver standards, here's this.
I know, I just feel like in some ways we may be misleading people into, well, it's okay if I do that because I'll just request a limited exception. I, I don't know, I've had mixed feelings about it all along and on the other hand, I feel like going through the variance process because a corner of my building, if I use standard dimensions for things, a corner is going to stick six inches into the setback, a variance seems like overkill.
Well, I, I mean, it seems like, this is, we're stuck with what the state has, right? So, but I think the place to put something like this would to make it, to basically put it in our actual descriptions of the zone so that we're telling everybody, you know, this is what's allowed in the zones, here's the standards and, and this is, you know, we will, this, here's a very restricted set of circumstances where we'll allow it. And again, it's sort of a policy call and I guess a risk call.
And we still have to review it, so the director has the authority to say yes or no. We don't, it doesn't have to be granted.
No, I understand, I just don't, I feel like we, we could not put enough examples in here of the places in which it would be granted or wouldn't.
I, I wouldn't recommend putting any.
So I feel like it's just not clear.
Well, then we can eliminate it altogether.
When to use it, but then if we eliminate it altogether, can we provide maybe in the description of the director's responsibilities? Can we grant him authority for very minor deviations from it?
I, I, I think that where it is, is appropriate. Um, and I think that I, you know, ten, twenty percent, I don't think it really matters, but I, I think that what Martha had pointed out was that we've limited it substantially. And so when you think about ten percent, if you've got a, your corner of your house is sticking into the five foot setback, you've got half a foot. You know, that's it, if it's over a half a foot, you, you can't, so I think twenty percent is probably reasonable in this case, um, and.
Given you can't actually provide a deviation from the building code anyway in some of those cases, yes.
So I, I, I think that, um, I'm quite comfortable with where it is, I think by putting it in the sep- in each zone just convolutes and makes it much more complex than it needs to be. Um, and I think that, um, I'm, I'm quite fine with what, um, is proposed. I, I just realized that what, what, what I have is different than what you have, because I have.
I'm sorry.
The recent, the most recent one.
Oh, do we have, can we see what, what Peter and Gina and Martha can see?
Chapter seventeen thirty-four, if you turn to chapter seventeen thirty-four in your document.
Yeah.
Um, the purpose stays the same. Uh, that language up there goes, becomes section seventeen thirty-four oh two oh.
Let's see, okay, now the, the language we have up there now, Martha, is that?
Uh, I can share my screen, but I just don't want you to look at anything else because we're, this is like a moving target.
Okay.
I'm going to trust you to keep your eyes on.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we took seventeen thirty-four, the purpose stayed the same, I inserted Julie's language into the applicability. Where it talks about what the planning director may do.
Can you blow up?
It's, it's this language though, it's exactly Julie's language.
Oh, because I mean, we've discussed this, whether, well, wait a minute, I mean, this, the purpose. We have, we have purpose in our proposed rig that we.
Right here, and that's the.
Yeah, well, we, we have discussed this, well, I mean, I know I suggested, uh, the first sentence to say would unreasonably require removal or modification of existing development. And I don't know if that's, then.
That's.
Right, so yeah, this is.
I'm sorry, we still can't, I can't read what you have up there.
If you could blow it up a little bit.
Yeah, this is hard because it's moving targets, right? Like we have so many versions, so is this what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need or modification of, and the, but we have removal.
Oh, I'm not even sure that that's exactly the purpose. It's only for removal of existing development, I mean, I thought we were trying to allow somebody to do an addition that had a very teeny tiny, um, you know, the height was two inches over.
So we could apply it to both new and existing?
Well, I.
I mean, because.
I don't know, I've lost track of what we're trying to.
Before, before it was under, under the title waiver, it was for, you know, um.
Because we were.
It was for new construction.
With Julie's language, it does say it has to be for existing development.
Right, I thought we were going, that it would allow though, um, modifications. Because if we're, all we're saying is, oh, we'll approve your existing thing that doesn't comply. If you come in and ask, well, who's going to come in and ask and point out that they have something that's out of compliance?
The neighbor would.
That actually happens more often than you'd expect.
But it's usually as part of wanting to do something else, right?
Or a sale.
It usually comes up, most often it comes up with a, the sale of property.
Exactly, so, but, but I was just saying that it could apply to, yes, I think there has to be existing development, but it could apply to a modification.
It would be.
To existing development.
So modification, I remember the discussion on this and I think that what you were intending to do is if you're taking it and making it bigger, no, if you're just really modifying it, I don't think of that. I don't think a, a modification is somehow take, I, I think that is okay under the sentence and the purpose statement.
But it's.
It's not a purpose, it's, but. Or the dimensional, it says limited exceptions are not available in the case of new buildings.
Right.
A full demolition rebuild or an addition.
And I'm saying, but the, the purpose sentence says to require property development would, it's the unreasonably require removal of existing development. It, yes, that's part of it, that's the solving the sales issue, right?
Well, just add or, or prohibit modifications.
Yeah. That's why we have you.
In that case, we better look at, uh.
Right, now.
At, the A. Yeah, uh, under, under applicability, A, we have the request.
Is to modify.
Existing development. If I'm reading this right.
Right, but modify existing development could be an addition.
Oh.
So you could say alter or add to existing development.
Well, I'm, I'm losing the bubble gear, which is not surprising, but the, uh, are we talking about? Can people use this on anything other than existing development? And I thought that's what you were taking care of. If you come in and.
Right, I agree, it's all, there has to be something there that's causing you to not have the flexibility to just do it right the first time.
It's, but, but you've already, you've done it wrong.
Not necessarily, so maybe it was fine, but you, you need to add on in order to put your, uh, ramp to your front door and now it's in the front setback because the house was already right on the front setback.
Okay, okay, so, so that, A, A is fine the way it is up there.
I believe A does.
Yes.
Address that issue.
Yeah, okay, great. Then I think my, on Julie's language, I have only one suggestion and that was actually great language that Julie came up with having to do with variances. The, the, the third bullet point up from the bottom, the circumstances giving rise to the current legal noncompliance or the current inability to enjoy a typical modification to an established use of the property. Do not, or I guess it should be duh, no, do not result from, and then this is language we used in the, inserted in the variance. From the applicants or if the applicant is not the owner, the owner's own making or lack of due diligence.
Action, inaction or noncompliance by the applicant or property owner, you don't think that covers it?
I.
I thought your, your language you provided in variance was better than this.
Oh.
I actually think this is slightly softer and I think that's the intention is to have it be slightly softer.
Okay, if, if everybody likes this language, then do we want to say?
Because what happens, it, you're, this is not going to apply if the problem is that these people built this house in the wrong spot and now they're trying to sell it. And you make a finding, even if you make this finding, they're not going to be able to use this section to resolve it.
Well, I think that's what we're. The variance language I thought was softer in that it, it, you know, lack of due diligence, et cetera, any of. If people are happy with this language.
Well, I'm not, maybe we should look at the variance language too, but I'm not sure you can make, have that finding be required and use this in the way we discussed using it because perhaps you built that house yourself.
Yeah.
And now you can't add the ramp in the front. Um, I'm using that because it's such a, it's one you, everybody wants to accommodate, right?
Really?
And, but they built that house themselves right on the front setback, or there's nothing the matter with doing that at the time, the situation. Well, I guess that would be okay because they didn't arise from them doing anything wrong. But if they built this house and somehow they, they're slight, not intentionally, but slightly over a setback.
Right.
And the, their sale is dependent on resolving it while they did it, they built it over it. Whether it was intentional or unintentional.
Well, we're not going to get into people's intention, right, I mean, so, we're never going to be able to.
But you're saying.
But that would rule that situation out.
You can't make that finding.
Oh. Is that okay?
So then they wouldn't be able to use this section.
It also inhibits people from deliberately building into the setback.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
That gets, you know, with this section, I guess if, if you, if it was a previous owner who had done that, then, then it's okay.
Yeah.
It's that this person coming, this applicant or the, or the owner, um, uh.
So they do a parent child transfer and they get around it, that's what's going to happen.
I was just going to say.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I, I guess.
Easy to get around, quite honestly.
I'm trying to think, what, what is we're trying to accomplish here?
I'm sold on after our discussion right now.
Okay.
Let's call it in.
Yes.
Julie's language, the other language, I don't care, but no, no modifications.
How about that?
Really?
Can't believe that.
And so I, I do have a question about this. So if it's denied, they could appeal it to the PC as a variance issue, right? Um, but then let's say that.
They could appeal a decision.
But a neighbor doesn't like it, but they don't find out about it until it's under.
But that's, but that's, you know, that's the whole thing with the A, the AUPs, right? I mean, do you, people can find out about one they're granted if they're on top of it, there's neighbor notice if they need an AUP.
Will this be noticed, that, that's really the question. I'm not sure that this is the kind of thing you would notice.
No, um, do not, it says right here, does not require public hearing or notice.
And because Julie's language says ministerially authorized.
Well, because we didn't want to, that, that was the whole thing, if we're going to be giving the director a lot of discretion on a case by case basis, we kind of, we don't want, we want it to be ministerial, I'm pretty sure.
Right, I agree, that's, I agree. So I'm just saying, so what, what happens when?
You can require notice.
Their building in the.
You can require neighbor notice and keep it ministerial if you want to. That wouldn't take it out of it, it's just that there wouldn't be a, a hearing process.
You just hate to have the neighbor be surprised by something that they might object to. On the other hand, wow, could you.
You, you could require the immediate notification, or the notification of the immediate adjacent neighbor that's affected by it. You know, it's going to be one property owner.
Oh, it could be on any side, right?
Well, I mean, if it's, if it's in, encroaching into one side yard setback.
Yes.
It's that one neighbor who's impacted, the people on the other side are not going to be affected at all, so you could say that, you know, you know, any immediately adjacent neighbor affected by this, you know, shall be notified.
Will be affected by, oh, I'm affected by it because I don't, it's ugly, you know?
I guess before you think about noticing, also think, well, what if somebody does object to it? Do you then deny them if it's a ministerial, like, or do you say, well, too bad?
I mean, that, I, I get your, right, I think Martha's right, I think if we do the notice, it needs to be like an AUP process, I, I, I agree with her.
But then. Right, but you can't ask for an AUP for, for a variance development standards, it's, they're different.
And we're talking about a twenty percent modification.
Right.
I think most of these people we're talking about are things people wouldn't even notice unless they dealt with the same issue themselves.
Yeah.
So it's mostly in a tighter area.
I, I, I think that once we start evolving this into a, a discretionary process, um, then we might as well just get rid of it altogether.
And we can come back and change the zone if it's not working.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm in favor of it the way it is now. We should give it a try and see how valuable it is.
Okay.
How does everyone else?
I agree.
Okay.
I believe that Mr. Fasino had, yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised.
That was the issue I want to talk about, was public notice and an opportunity to appeal for the neighbor who's, might be affected, it sounds like you don't want to go there, so. But, you know, from the CPC standpoint, they would like to see an opportunity to, they would like to see the neighbor notice and an opportunity to appeal.
Well, then it becomes an AUP, right?
No.
Well, it just becomes a, because, for example, if you look at the section, it uses the word minor. Minor is, minor is a, uh, judgment call, it's not a specific.
It's twenty percent.
Twenty percent, that's pretty specific.
Twenty percent is, but minor, you know, for example, uh, twenty percent of, if your, your building is thirty-five feet high, twenty-five percent is another seven.
That's what I was just going to say.
If your setback is thirty-five feet, seven, you know, twenty percent is another seven, seven feet off the seven. So it depends on what the twenty percent is of, right? Or if it's of the square footage of the building, you know, hopefully then we're not going to go there, but that wouldn't, I don't, I would like to not think that a twenty percent change in the square footage of the building would be minor if it's a, but, you know, I'm a planning commissioner, so.
It depends on what twenty percent is applied to, I think we should take the percentage out. Because a person, and I know that Martha's not in favor of examples, but this might be a place where an example would be a minimal encroachment into a side setback or, or any setback or a, you know, minimal exceeding of the height limitation, it's not, it's not to let you have a fourth story on your building.
Well, dimensional requirements by twenty percent puts some guardrails on it turning into a.
No, it does not, twenty percent of a height limitation, that's, Tom brought up exactly the one that I thought of. Is, that's a humongous change, that's a whole nother floor problem.
Oh, I mean, I don't care what the percentage is, I'm just saying having a percentage puts guardrails.
The same percentage won't work for the different development standards.
Okay.
So like, like Peter brought up, ten percent, you know, into a, a five foot seven. So like, like Peter brought up, 10%, you know, into a, a 5-foot setback, yes, that's very small, but 10% of height, or 20%, whatever the number is, none of them are going to be consistent among the different issues, like, maybe you're going to have less parking, or instead of a 20-foot deep parking space, we're going to allow a 19 and 1/2-foot deep parking space, you know?
But isn't this a part of what we, I mean, we.
This is all for existing development, and so if someone has, let's use a parking example, inadequate parking for their development, and someone's come in, they want to, you know, they're buying the business, and they're told, oh, you don't have enough parking, well, that's addressed in the parking ordinance.
Right.
So, I think, and if a house is constructed that is a few feet over, or a few inches over the property line, no big deal. I don't know how a house could be constructed unless it's built without a permit.
Right.
That is higher. Comment, but, but would we allow, under this, these provisions, someone to add a third story?
No, 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 but I'm just saying, the percentage is just not applicable, I think just saying minor dimensional, and I think having dimensional deviations or standards here, that helps it, because that, that really puts it into the height, width, depth.
But then, where does, where's the threshold between that and a variance?
I think if we leave the percentage in.
I mean, you got to have, we got to have something.
We need to do that standard in, to be ministerial, otherwise it becomes discretionary.
I totally agree with that.
And, and we could, we could, you know, just simply remove, remove under C2 the word minor, a modification, because it still has to meet that 20% standard, it still has to meet all of these other findings.
I think keeping the minor is more helpful, because it modifies the 20%, which the 20% could be.
That's the maximum.
Exactly, but, but let's say the setback is 30 feet, and you're going to allow them 20% into.
The point I, the point I would like to make is, we, it's ministerial, I think we would have to somewhat rely upon the planning director being a philosopher king, and recognizing the difference between heights and, and encroachment on a 5%, a 5-foot setback and this sort of thing, the 20% provides some limitation, but, uh, planning director's going to catch all sorts of public criticism if all of a sudden there's an extra story on this building or whatever.
No, I, I'm understanding that, but I'm just saying that 20%, you might not be able to allow 20% in many cases.
Right, right.
But this is.
It says that.
So it's going to be the minimum amount necessary to accomplish what is trying to be accomplished, adding a handicap ramp, allowing the existing encroachment to remain and become legal.
Now, that, I don't think is in here yet, but I think that's, that's the guidance, is the, the minimum amount to become legal is a, is a standard, you know, that that's, that's what the planning director's goal is, is, and you have the discretion up to a certain amount, but the, that, the.
Doesn't mean I have to approve.
Right.
And shouldn't that just be one of, one of these? Or one of the, the findings, you know, it doesn't say findings, but following apply, one of those should be the, the modification is the minimum amount to, to allow, allow
Complice of purpose of the request.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To, yeah, to, to achieve the purpose of this chapter.
The director shall authorize only the minimum deviation from dimensional standards necessary to achieve the purpose of the request? No.
Yes, the purpose of the request, it's not the purpose of the chapter.
Not the purpose of the chapter?
No.
Yeah, because it's going to be dependent on each individual, what are they trying to do? They need a handicap ramp, it's going to be.
Yeah, okay, so that, that, that does not require the director to listen to the applicant as far as the amount they have wants, what they need, just what they need.
Right, like, we had those samples where people were saying, but I want a bigger house, like. But is that the minimum that could cause?
The only thing was if the person, if we say meet the need of the request, and the request is overly generous, yeah.
Speak a little more slowly, I've got to turn on the hearing.
No, I, I'm just, meet the need of the request, of course, if a person requests too much, then we don't want to be beholden to the request, right?
Right.
So the, 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 meet the.
Necessary to, see.
Use of the property or something, I think the, the purpose of the request.
Purpose of the request.
To fulfill the purpose of the request.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm afraid that's one of your, if all the following applies.
Yeah, just because he asked, that's what means it has to be granted.
But we're still talking about existing development, right?
Yeah. So I think.
You can add, your request might be to add to that existing development. Like, we've seen these where somebody wanted to add a bathroom to the existing house, the house is already in a setback, legally, because it predated all of this, all they want to do is extend that line a little bit, so they're still, but that line was going to be 6 inches in the setback. It just seems like a whole variance to do that is, I, I am confident that between Peter and Gina and Martha, that they completely understand this, and I do, like, I have some angst about not having any notification, but I think starting a whole notification process, maybe notifying a next-door neighbor if you're going into the side setback.
I do, I think Martha was right, that if we're doing it, and that what's, what's the purpose, I think that's a slippery slope into a discretionary review of, there's, you know, I think we're starting to.
And it's a variance at that point, there is no, you haven't really provided any relief.
And director has no evidence the authorizing deviation will negatively impact existing premises on neighboring property.
Cancel.
Did you write that down? No, because this is a section of special importance to architects or anything.
Exactly.
We've got the helicopters. It's architectural.
How we could update all our priorities in this.
I think we finalized this one, we can move on to the next. Thank you.
Relatively, I think.
What next, Gina?
Uh, let's see.
At some point, we need to go through.
Done, done, development standards. Well, I think it depends on what time you want to break for lunch.
We can break in the middle of the.
We've got dark sky, I don't know if we want to tackle that.
We might actually be able to do that fairly quickly with you guys, is, now that you've kind of cleaned things up.
And then, and then maybe we should consider going to lunch, and then perhaps maybe then taking care of all of the, the public comment. Yep, that we haven't yet addressed after lunch.
Okay, but can we take a few minutes to read the dark skies as presented to us this morning? So, maybe take a.
Want to, a short break, or? Are we taking a break?
No. Are we offline taking a break?
Let's take it, would 5 minutes be enough for people to, 10 minutes?
Yeah.
Somebody wants something? Okay, planning commissioners, picking up where we left off at lighting and illumination? And Julie, have you had a chance to look, and did you have anything? I didn't, I did not have a chance to look at what it, there's a. Min- minimal, cleaned up a little bit, and I think Martha made some good edits. I saw comments that you had added in a couple things previously, but. I responded to the one, but it didn't have comments attached. Anyway, let's, let's just go ahead and work our way through, we'll let maybe Martha lead this, is there anything you want to point out? Or you would just want to hear from the commissioners on their thoughts?
I think just here, I think what we tried to do was, tap for kind of what we talked about, and, or, and integrate, kind of some language that you had worked on, and just integrate that into.
Julie, turn to my. We haven't, it, there was some language that, once again, made it more discretionary, and it wasn't clear, so, whether you wanted it to be like that or not.
No, I think Martha has cleaned up most of those things, and tried to apply an actual numerical standard where we could find one. The one thing I didn't do was my job to double-check alumina rating for the statues or flags, my date kind of got away from me, but I, I'll do that at lunch. Okay, so commissioners.
Well, I, overall, I just, I think this is great, I really think we're, we're going to achieve the purpose, or we set out to do, prefer, I'd say that prefatory to saying, well, in the first line, I don't, I wouldn't want somebody to say, well, the existing character of our communities, looking at downtown San Andreas, is we have bright lights shining all over the place, do we really want to, say, preserve the existing character of our communities in rural areas, or do we want to, to, maybe, maybe just take out the word existing?
That's fine.
It's really what we're, the purpose is picking up in the second.
And everybody can read into that what they like, or what they think the character.
Right, I'm just orientating.
Preserve.
Yeah. I like enhance. Again, that's why we're happy to have you back.
That's, that's great, that's really great. Oh, that's, that's wonderful. The next thing I have is done, and applicability, just the word luminaires, that, that is not something that a lame person knows what we're talking about.
I, I offered a, a definition, I don't know if they decided they needed to include it in the definitions or not. A luminaire, for those who don't know, is an integrated light fixture, generally where the LED is part of the light fixture, it's not a bulb or a lamp that you screw in or plug in.
I think, I think that would be good to have a definition.
It's the more common situation now.
Yeah. I think it's absolutely elegant to, under exemptions, A, lighting not under the jurisdiction of the county, so we don't have to talk about what is under the jurisdiction of the county. We get into general requirements, then stating the intent of the following standards, should that just be reflected under the purpose? It seems to me that this is a restatement of a purpose.
It does seem like a restatement of the purpose.
But, but it says additional things than what is set up there. What section are you looking at? I'm, I'm looking at, on the second page, general requirement, as a statement of intent of the following standards, and I think those should be transported up to the purpose.
Yeah, that whole sentence could probably just be moved up to the purpose. Although, it's sort of introductory to why the, these specific requirements are there, so, I, I guess I would feel strongly.
Does it, just in case somebody wanted to parse out and say, well, well, the, these standards are only, only, we only have to look at the intent, so I'd put it up in purpose. And maybe inserted between the first and second sentences of the purpose. Says the, the, the second, the last sentence of the purpose to ensure continuing and leads into the objectives.
So the, on, on, oh, sorry, you're probably, I'm, I just have one comment, we're probably not there yet.
It'll take a little tailoring of the sentence, that now, just general requirements to make it fit.
Maybe we leave that to them, is that, does everybody agree that they would be better placed at the front?
And when we talk, now I'm at the top of the third page, the outdoor light fixtures and stuff, when we talk about as determined by the director, would, what, under what jurisdiction does the, what jurisdiction does the director have to make? Where, where is that?
What number, what section?
Okay, I'm, I'm just looking up, this is on the third page. Okay, that's.
Oh, yeah. I think that starts making it discretionary.
Well, but when we get to the last page, E, any application for a permit that includes outdoor light fixtures, so that, that would be, that, that application would be for a building permit.
So you're, they're routed internally?
Yeah, that's what Gina educated us on last time, so that, I, I just wonder when we say as determined by the director, back on the third page, if we need to clarify how it's getting to the director.
I, I think that as written, that you're, I would not put to a reasonable level as determined by the director.
Okay.
I think that's too vague and too.
So just end it, limit light pollution, clear light trespass, period?
Period, yeah, I agree.
Okay. So in that, just looking at the practicalities, then, somebody applies for a building permit and includes the lighting plan, that gets referred to the director somehow between building and the planning department, this determination is made, is that right? That, that it's, that it's satisfied this requirement?
Yes.
Yes.
You could also say limit to the, you know, to the maximum extent possible, if you wanted to just make it clear that we're intending, we mean it.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah. I, I'd be in favor of that.
The maximum extent possible is a, could be telling people they can't have lights, you know? I.
Okay.
Reasonably limit? I mean, yeah. But it, it wouldn't be deter, we're telling people what to do without involving the director at this point, and so the question is, do you want it to be looked at on a case-by-case basis through the nuisance and complaint procedure?
Because it already tells you what the shielding required is, what the lumin level and, and foot candles, that the boundaries are, Martha did a good job of including a lot of specifics.
Yeah. Yeah.
The director is involved, but we're not talking about the director.
It might not. You could defer that, that to the building department.
Or they might be mounting, I don't know, they might be mounting a light on an existing pole and there's no need for any permit.
Exactly.
So, yeah. But again, it's just during, that was just for outdoor, that was just for, you know, the occasional game or what have you, right? That, section B, it's an outdoor recreational activity. It's probably not a constant light, I presume.
Typically, I think it's going to be Feeny Park or Park in San Andreas, you know.
It's going to be a park and, and most of those that are, I mean, schools are all exempt anyway because we don't have the authority for that, so.
So it's really, and I don't think anyone's going to get excited about the one on the front of the garage so they can play basketball practice their shooting at night.
I don't, and subdivision D at the top of the third, near the top of the third page. But maybe somebody ought to explain the difference between C and D, but D itself, I have a, I'm not sure.
D is an up-down light. It's considered unshielded if any light can escape the top of the fixture. But many people choose those fixtures for decorative purposes, but they're under their porch or they're under a covered walkway. They're not lighting up the night sky. They're not bothering anyone. And I'm probably overly sensitive to this, is I would tell somebody, no, you can't have that porch light because we don't allow unshielded fixtures.
Okay, the language under a porch, to me, would be, you know, below the porch, so under, within a covered.
Under a porch or roofed area, I think that, yeah. So you could say under a porch roof or other.
You're talking about these cool tube lights that look really cool? I know exactly, I like those too.
I think what it means, if it's under the porch, it's underneath the porch.
Yeah, so I get what you're saying.
Could you just say?
Under a roofed.
Within a covered porch or under.
Within a covered porch or under a roofed area.
There we go.
Yeah. We'll let Martha get that just right.
But now, just basically explain the, what we're doing in C and what we're doing in D.
So C is a partially shielded fixture, so it's a fixture that the top, no light can escape the top. And the, most of the light is covered and is allowed out in a cone. But because of the height that it's at, or the design of it, you might actually be able to see that the bulb or the source of the lighting at that angle. Even though, but there's a translucent cover on it, so you're not getting glare from it. But it's not fully shielded, so. I mean, that's probably the most common fixture on the side of a house.
You're talking about like the coach lights?
Yeah.
They have like a little canopy on top.
Right.
In a box below.
Typical residential light, the, the light comes out through glass on the side, some deck or decorative thing. But that's what partially shielded means. It just means it's not hiding every bit of the lamp being or light source entirely, but it's filtered through something.
Unshielded, even though it is obscured by translucent glass, it, it is shining up, we have it so it's shining through a roof.
It could be shining every direction, but not off its property.
There's a, there's a ceiling above that page.
Exactly. And Martha said she might have pictures of some of these things that could be added.
I, I think the pictures, as we discussed before, pictures showing fully shielded, partially shielded, and, and what's the other?
Unshielded.
No, the cutoff.
Oh, fully cut off.
Fully cut off, yeah.
You know, cutoff is usually, I don't know if this is technically the case, but typically when they describe a light as cut off, it's an industrial or institutional style light, and the cutoff then is a piece that's been added. Like, if you look at old fashioned streetlights that look like this, something like China, the cutoff is the piece that prevents it from shining upwards.
On the last page, the uplighting, again, we have a pursuant to review by the director.
So could we hear, I'm just saying, I would again recommend we get rid of that, but you could probably limit it to public property. Is anything not going to be on a public property?
Yeah, everybody has a, a flag on their property in this county. A lot of.
Well, it says government flags. Oh, US government flags, okay.
Have flags and there's, well, the law doesn't define all that.
I would, I would come up with a standard or, and get rid of the personal.
So I was going to look up what the maximum lumens would reasonably be, so I just need to look up some light fixtures.
Because these are, these are really the primary exceptions to ours, you know, it's got a.
This is, and one I don't think you can eliminate.
No. Well, I suppose you could require the light on the flag to be directed above the flag, but.
So I, you guys don't want to hear my whole story of this, but I've been working on this for years. We've tried many, many of those things that light a flag from above, and they've all failed. So, and, and in fact, the lighting project in Murphy's just installed the uplights, even though I asked them to find another solution. So the lighting designers were unable to come up with another solution they felt was robust enough to be reliable over the long term and light the flag from, so they did it from below.
Yeah.
So I feel like I'm exhausted.
So how do we, how do we get the director out of this, then? Do you limit the lumens?
Yeah, I'll come up with a lumen limitation.
Lumen limitation?
Lumen limitation.
I think Gilbert and Sullivan's song very similar.
For the sign section, did you, I, did you check it against our sign chapter to make sure there was no?
I thought that Gina and Martha were going to do that, decide where to put it. Peter can decide where he thinks it's easiest to administer.
Yeah, really, I, I think the language here is good, it's just a matter of where it belongs. Should we put it here in the lighting or put it under sign?
Right.
I think it would be helpful to have sign, everything to do with signs in one place. It's a time, place, manner restriction, right?
Yeah.
I tend to agree that that's better.
But, but have sign lighting in here saying C section so-and-so.
That would be fine.
I just don't remember. I thought we had already some, some, but not all.
And I think maybe we referred to this.
Yes, and that's what I looked up and saw is that we were referring back and forth and not actually solving it. Okay, so move to signings and keep reference.
Yeah.
Are we good then?
We're imagining you're going to have a little public.
Yeah. Tom, I'm sure you probably have some comments.
My only comment was that I had, yeah, the email regarding an addition. So if you want to consider this addition, I'd appreciate it.
Which basically where things could, on existing lighting, if they could be redirected by minor adjustment, I'm paraphrasing you, Tom, so why don't you, why don't you tell us what your basic plan is?
Well, we get that the idea here originally is to apply the ordinance only to replacement lighting so that it will not result in any, you know, immediate out-of-pocket cost to anybody. And so we are trying to frame something consistent with that concept. Now, there are cases in which the mere redirection of lighting from an existing adjustable fixture could prevent the disturbance of neighbors. It doesn't require purchasing a new fixture or a new timing or an abortion sensor or a pole. It does not require removing or not using the existing fixture. It just requires somebody to get on a ladder, listen to some hardware, and redirect the fixture or adjusting shield. We don't think this overburdens property owners with exterior lighting. We, we suspect that many good neighbors would be willing to redirect their adjustable lighting if asked. However, other neighbors may be unwilling to voluntarily redirect their existing adjustable lighting. But we think some of those neighbors might be inspired to redirect their lighting to avoid, you know, inspections from county code enforcement. So the idea here is, we use most of the language from your sections that you already, that you already had. And we, the purpose is to create standards for existing outdoor lighting to minimize light pollution glare and light trespass posed by misaligned light fixtures while limiting the cost of implementation. And the standard would apply in residential zones only when the oriented, when the orientation of existing figures, fixtures can be easily adjusted to do so. All the lights shall be directed and oriented to prevent light spill over and glare onto adjacent properties to be refeasible. All the exceptions that you had suggested are, were still in place. And so that's, now, now we understand you've adjusted your language. And, you know, we'd be, we're welcome to having this language adjusted as well. We kept it as a separate section because we didn't want to mix apples and oranges here. If, you know, if you included it, but the board supervisor doesn't like it, they could just get rid of the section. We don't want to, we don't want to toss out the, the existing section that you have, you know, inadvertently.
So I think, I think the first, the real question here is do we want to address existing lighting in a formal way? I, I would love to encourage people to adjust their existing lighting and be kind to their neighbors. But do we want a formal requirement or changes to existing lighting?
Neither of you have to speak out.
I'm not a big fan of that.
Neither do I. I think the encouragement, but.
Encouragement is fine, but.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I could be in favor of not another chapter or section, but just something that and I don't know that it belongs in the zoning code, but I, I would love to see us encourage people to modify their existing lighting where it's easily achievable. I just don't see any way to enforce it. And so I couldn't quite craft a way to fit it tightly into here, but if, you know, there's some way that we can put something in there.
I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Yeah, I think Peter might have thoughts on.
An encouragement in the zoning code is sort of super. You either have it or you don't. I agree 100% that there's a lot of existing lights that shouldn't have been put out. And the only thing I can think of is, is if you're inclined to add something, maybe under applicability, you know, where it says, you know, only apply to new fixtures, but you could say, you know, property owners are encouraged to apply or modify their existing lighting to meet these standards and something like that.
So there's some mention of.
Or real. I do think, I would love to see some of those lights.
I, I would, it seems to me we do need to have a statement here about existing lighting, which I don't think we have.
We say it applies only to new and replaced.
Ah, okay.
Now, you have, I mean, I just, you, you are not necessarily limited to allowing, just be aware, you're not, this is not a non-conforming use situation. You can require new regulations if you want, just understand that you have that authority.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I think that a statement such as Peter is recommending or suggesting would be good. It's, it's just to make it clear that existing lighting is not covered. I mean, you say, you put, that that would be the place we could put the.
So it'd be under applicability, I think, I thought Peter's suggestion was headed toward. I mean, that's the only place I can see to do it too. And I could also see trying to come up with some wording that where we said that upon request of neighbors, you shall realign your lighting to the extent possible or something, but how, who, you have no way to apply this. How, how does that person know that there's a, a code requiring that? They're not coming in to ask for anything.
Right. Yeah, and that's why I think that again, as much as I would love to see something like this.
Your microphone's.
Oh, I'm sorry. As Julie pointed out, we could require over a period of time retrofitting of existing lighting. And that's a policy call. And, you know, I wouldn't have any heartburn over that, but I think.
Funding, though, that would be tough to.
Well, it's, you know, it's a decision that, you know, the county would need to make. Do we want to require all existing commercial and residential, you know, property owners to bring their lighting into conformance? And it sounds like probably not, is what I heard from the commission here. So then the only other option is to add really sort of a meaningless encouragement statement in the code. Which we could do, but again, it doesn't really serve any purpose and it just sort of ends up cluttering up.
Or you could require them where easily achievable to realign.
But what, what, what does that mean? What is easily achievable? How are you going to do? I, I know what that means. I, I know you can direct it down, but.
So the 83-year-old's going to climb a ladder to?
Right.
Right, or, you know, the commercial business is going to have to go out there and add shields or something to their spotlight in their yard.
I'm not sure that's modifying the fixture as opposed to just redirecting.
Right, right.
Reorienting a fixture, I think. I would have no angst over requiring people to reorient them because how it would be enforced was when there's a complaint, you come out, you say you're going to have to reorient that fixture. That's no, that's not going to cost anybody anything and it's simple enough. It's just.
They might if, if the 83-year-old has to hire a, you know, do it. I'm, I'm just looking. Some girl's husband just fell off his bike, so.
So I'm up there to do that. Yeah, I, I wouldn't have any real angst over that as long as you're not requiring them to go out, buy a new fixture.
So we have to then define what is adjustable, reorientable light fixture as opposed to one that's fixed.
Right. I need that.
Have a comment?
Sure.
Thank you, Michelle, for articulating what I tried to articulate so much better. That's exactly what we're trying to do. This comes up a lot. I get neighbor-to-neighbor complaints coming, come to me all the time. And I always refer them to somebody else because I don't do neighbor-to-neighbor complaints. But it, a, a situation would be, just as Michelle suggests, someone's got a neighbor who's shining the lights in their, in their, in their bedroom at night and they, that right under this, if there was this provision, they could make a complaint and they'd have to redirect an adjustable light. I know neighbors who have intentionally redirected their lights into some. I know of neighbors who have intentionally redirected their lights into somebody's backyard for this very purpose. Now, I know we're not gonna solve every neighbor-to-neighbor problem. But the challenge here is to avoid that collateral damage that often happens when somebody, you know, intentionally shines light in one neighbor's yard and ends up, you know, going all over the place. So, if there could be a complaint-based system that would require this, I think you're right on. That would make sense. We have no, no, there was no suggestion in this that we would require retrofitting or any other stuff. That's, that costs money.
So, Gina, Peter, and Martha feel like they could come up with a sentence or two that would, so...
So the idea would be that based on a complaint, that...
I wouldn't do it even.
Yeah, but, so, existing...
Directional fixtures?
Yeah.
Or adjustable?
Adjustable fixtures shall be modified.
Two is our...
Yeah, this is your favorite thing.
I'm saying, light fixtures that can be redirected without requiring replacement or reconstruction of the fixtures shall be redirected as required in this chapter. Shall comply, shall be redirected, you know, shall be adjusted to comply with this.
So far in our area, so far as possible.
Because sometimes people have lights shining that could bother a neighbor, but they need to be shining that way. Then you can tell them they can't do that, and they have their reasons for it.
Exactly that.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, they don't ever need to shine beyond their property.
Right.
So, I'd put that...
I think we could take Julie's language.
I like adjustable.
And we can modify Julie's language and add that in, probably as a separate section.
So it would be like...
Subsection to this.
An exception to something. Exception to that it only applies to, but whatever you...
Well, I think under applicability, we could say except as provided in subsection, whatever the last one is. And then we'll have, you know, a section F that is existing lighting.
Existing light.
Adjustment to existing lighting.
Everybody's good?
What do we have left?
We're gonna come back after lunch and attack some of the comments that have come in from the public and just make sure we've already looked at them or made adjustments. So would we like to take a 50-minute lunch?
How about 47?
Just so you know, Peter, Michelle's not in favor of an hour.
Why don't we go ahead and take an hour? We did do pretty well this morning. You guys are so good.
Great.
Okay? So we will be back here at a quarter to one.
Good.
Ready to finish up today before 3:00. Yeah, so after we get to his appointment.
Okay.
It is 12:45, and the planning commission is back in session. And we are going to pick up, I believe, with taking a look at the correspondence we received. Unless you guys have some lingering thing... Oh, I have a bit of information on the flag lighting. I have that information. So, maybe we'll do that first and get it out of the way. So for flag poles up to 50 feet high, 400 lumens, and a narrowly focused beam. And for flag poles beyond that height, 500 lumen maximum. And a narrowly focused beam.
And then for plaques narrowly focused, yeah. I understand why you have to go up on a plaque.
We weren't really talking, it depends on how the plaque is, we were talking about statues.
Okay, I thought the plaque was in there.
So I think you guys can work that in. I don't think we have to have a specific different lumen limitation for every kind of thing that could be lit. And I think you could probably say 300 lumens for anything else.
So it was 400 for 50 feet?
Mm-hmm, 500 for above 50 feet. And maybe 300 lumens for statues and other commemorative items. We don't have any of those mile-long walls. So, which would require something different. Okay. Anything else anybody else has they wanna mop up? All right. So, would we like to start with Muriel's letter or with Tom's?
I think maybe Tom's, and Muriel has some of the same...
Yes.
Subject. And we can go back and forth when we're doing common subjects.
So, exterior lighting, we've discussed.
I think we're on his 4224. While she's sorting through her papers, Tom, I want to commend you for when you make proposals, you actually propose specific language. That's, that's very helpful in focusing our attention on where you would like us to go. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think this is the question of overlays or identification of parcels that have restrictions and limitations on them. And I'd like Peter to return to his seat, so he can talk.
Add Muriel.
Martha, do you have any input on this item?
It has come up in several, in several times from various places, that the idea of creating an overlay that would identify parcels that are restricted from further development, like a conservation easement.
Okay.
And I'd like to start by asking the planning department, and Martha, to explain if we were to oppose such identification on the zoning map, say, what all burdens would that place on the planning department to have that happen?
So I, we're, assume we're talking about the X designator, which is a limitation that says this parcel cannot be further subdivided.
Right.
And it was created primarily to identify where there was a cluster development.
No, 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 we're talking about something like a CE conservation easement. This parcel is in a conservation piece.
Restriction on the growth, on the development.
The development.
So give people, give both the planning department and the public notice that, gee, there's something out there. But I'm concerned that that might lead to...
I think it's, so the conservation easement has those regulations built into it.
Yeah.
So, the easement is a contract more or less between the property owner and another entity, right? It's recorded.
But it's not identified on our map. You can't glance at a map and see what land is in a conservation.
But I guess the question then is, is it the responsibility of the county through its zoning to identify all potential restrictions that are on a piece of property that the county wasn't necessarily a party to?
Right.
And on the Muriel's letter, she indicated that there is a response, or someone's letter, there is a responsibility to map those and identify those. But it doesn't necessarily mean it should be in the zoning. If someone decided that they were going to void that easement for whatever reason, you know, the agency that took that property realized it was no longer valuable for the purpose of which it is, we'd have to go through a zoning ordinance to do that. I don't think that it's appropriate for the county to apply a zoning designation, whether it be a primary zone or an overlay zone, on something that is not a component of our zoning code.
Right.
So, I have an issue years ago where a parcel was identified for oak woodlands mitigation. And then they tried to use that same parcel multiple times in the, you know... And it wasn't immediately obvious to anybody that... So I can see a benefit in understanding what parcels have already been used or restricted in some way, although I agree that a private agreement isn't a part of it.
But I have a question. My understanding, in Government Code Section 65565, which Muriel Zeller cites, seems to say that with the component of the open space element, that you need to identify and map, let's say blah 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 blah, agricultural lands within the city's or county jurisdiction. And portion of that map shall include all parcels subject to a contract executed pursuant to the Williamson Act.
Which we do.
Which we did.
All parcels subject to a conservation easement. So we did that.
We did that. There was some disagreement on whether or not we had captured all of those. And it was a moving target. We did it at a point in time. We don't have to do it every time there's a change. We don't amend our general plan every time there's a change. But this was background information for the county to understand these lands are restricted for one reason or another. And base our land use decisions on adoption of the general plan with that information in mind.
But that's a one-time requirement to have that.
And it should be something that we update regularly, so we have that information. And I think with the advent of the improved GIS system that we have, I don't know when this issue that you had taken place, but, you know, things have changed. We have the ability to track that stuff much more readily now. When we get any application, even a building permit, we'll go to our GIS and see what's there. You know, and so that's something that is common now in our day-to-day actions in the planning department to check and see what kind of restrictions are on a piece of property.
And in that, in checking for that, why, you would come across a conservation easement.
They would, but with the public using the GIS system. I know they're working on that, give us more access.
Well, and, you know, the public does have access to the county's GIS. Not all of the layers, but most of the layers that are applicable to, you know, what the public needs. Now, I will not say that someone's gonna buy a piece of property and not do their due diligence and determine later that, oh, I didn't know there was a restriction on it. I know someone that bought a piece of property, they didn't realize there was a conservation easement on it, and was very upset about that.
But we have to realize, though, remember that those conservation easements are recorded. So that's gonna be picked up in title.
Should be.
It should reflect on your title report. And if you're, you know, if the title company's doing their due diligence, then that will be reflected. And if you're gonna buy a piece of property and you're gonna read your title report, you'll find it. But, you know, we also have the creation of the open space zone that one, a property owner could in fact apply, you know, to have their parcel zoned OS, open space, if they desire to do so.
Part of this change of the zoning code, you're not gonna go through everything and check and see whether something has a conservation easement.
Because we don't know what those individual restrictions are. I mean, the conservation easements are all for different purposes and restrict different things. So I don't think it's gonna be our, it shouldn't be our responsibility to go and identify all those and to figure out whether or not the OS zone is appropriate to apply to each one of those parcels.
Public comment? I think we're getting off the subject here. There's different levels we should be talking about. The first level is instances, whereas part of a county approval, a parcel has been a parcel has been set aside by, through conservation easement. So, if you look at the general plan now, general plan calls for using conservation easements as mitigation for oak woodlands and for resource production lands that are converted. So this is an instance where some developer has said, you know what, okay, I'm gonna convert 1,000 acres of resource production land into a development, so I'm gonna get a conservation easement over here as mitigation. Okay? So this is an instance where the county has created the responsibility. This isn't an anonymous conservation easement, right? So the question is, when the county creates this responsibility, and that conservation easement is placed on that other property, will there be some classification of that property as no longer subject to subdivisions? The second class is in clustering. Again, the county's encouraging people to use clustering so that rather than dividing up, say, 400 acres into 10, 40-acre parcels, they could cluster those 10 parcels onto, say, 20 or 50 acres, leaving the rest of it in some sort of other agricultural use, for example. So, inherent in clustering, there's usually some sort of restriction on the further subdivision of that property because they've already got all of their allowed units through the clustering. So again, this is a situation, not an anonymous conservation easement, but a situation where there's been a restriction placed on property through a county approval process.
So I would, I'd just like to say this. I, my sense of, and I've said this to other clients as well...
When we're doing a zoning ordinance, the purpose of the zoning ordinance is largely to tell the public what is expected of them. Mr. Infasino might have good suggestions, the commissioners might have good suggestions for internal policies. The responsibility to mitigate impacts does not require us to please or do due diligence on a case-by-case basis. As long as we require the mitigation, the establishment of the conservation easement might be the choice of mitigation. We have, we have now met our sequoia obligations. So if we take on the, this concept that we are going to, if we, I take it back. We should possibly take it on, but to commit ourselves in a zoning ordinance to take it on, to where we are in trouble if we miss something, is not something that I would recommend.
And just the mechanics of doing what Tom has suggested, what all, would we, would we have to rezone to put a...
You would have to rezone to put an overlay. Right, right, right.
And, and so each person would be...
And when we're talking about the clustering of development and that kind of internal transfer of, there's, the map that created that subdivision is supposed to have a note that provides further restrictions. And if the restriction is no further land development, or I should say, no further land division, then that note will be on the face of the map, and that's a recorded document.
Yeah. Yeah, I think clustering, I'd like to consider clustering as separate from this first, just the idea of anything that has a restriction needs to be...
So we don't necessarily, we don't need an additional, you know, zone in order to identify that because it's already identified in the project. And it's, and like I said, it's a recorded map with a note. In addition, I mean, if we're processing an application for, just say, a land division, part of the process is for any planner in our staff, and this goes well beyond Calvers County, there's, you know, there's a due diligence on our part to do some research and figure out, how was that parcel created? Are there further restrictions that might be shown on the face of the map? Those are normal activities through that process of reviewing that application for consideration. So that's all part of the process of a tentative parcel map or a subdivision map.
Yeah, and just, just the idea of the conservation easement being noted.
Yeah.
Basically, is that what I'm hearing is that the planning department has ways to see whether there's a conservation easement or not. And through title searches, the potential buyer or developer or whatever could also be notified that there's a conservation easement on the property, is that right?
It would have to be.
Yeah. So...
I think this is more, it's an interest to people looking at the county or doing large-scale planning, looking at greenhouse gases or environmental issues, looking at how you might connect wildlife corridors. So they might have an interest in that. So they might have an interest in that information. But it doesn't seem to be a responsibility of the county to delve into that as part of our zoning code, I think. I could see an advantage in creating some kind of an overlay long-term and as projects happen, going ahead and getting it noted on the map for our own convenience without an obligation to the public with a disclaimer on it. And it says it may not be a hundred percent of today, or it may not.
You still have to do your own due diligence.
Right.
Yes, exactly.
And you also have to remember.
It's a policy, not necessarily a zoning.
We, and we do have the EP combining zone in addition to the new open space. So depending on the circumstance, if the county is approving a project such as that, it could very well be appropriate for us to include the EP overlay zone for a protected area. Or the OS open space. So those are two zones that we could utilize in those circumstances as necessary.
Well, I don't want us to unnecessarily impose new obligations upon the county, particularly if those might give rise to possible lawsuits or controversies. If we happen not to do the same thing at the same time. So what I'm hearing from the planning department is that there is a, there are ways for people to find out whether there is a conservation easement on it and that we do not need a special zoning designation to cover that. And I go along with that.
That's happening.
Yeah. Now, clustering, I think is a, is another situation. And to me, to anticipate now where we might want clusters, I think, which is what I understand. And Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I think there's two different ways you might cluster. And there's sort of the onsite clustering of, you've got forty acres, it's zone one acre. You can have forty parcels, but you put forty, or thirty-nine parcels on half-acre lot and all the rest is one large lot. That's clustering in my mind. You have transfer of density, which is actually, we have separate parcels. You transfer density from one parcel to another that, you know, is not part of the development. And that parcel A, the giving parcel, loses its potential for development while the receiving parcel increases its development. It is very rare that you see that in an area like Calvers County because we don't see development that maximizes the development potential, except in rural areas, five and ten acre parcels, where we don't necessarily want to see that anyway. Very successful transfer development program is in Marin County, where they've transferred the density development potential from the West County dairy land to the Highway 101 corridor in the East County, and it's been very successful. But we don't have that situation here in most rural counties. Just you don't see the kind of development that would demand an increase in the density that we already allow. So it's possible it could happen here, but very, very unlikely. So what we're looking at primarily is there may be constraints on a parcel that says it's better to put all of our development in this corner of the property, leave all the rest undeveloped, or, you know, maybe one house on a large lot. And in the past, what we did was we used the X designator for that. It says, these have been developed as a unified project. None of the lots can be further developed under its current zone without going through a zoning amendment, possibly a general plan amendment, and a new subdivision. And so I think that was sort of the second part of the question that Mr. Infasino raised and why I was sort of getting at initially, was that that was the way that we would quickly identify, oh, wait, you can't further develop this. I know there's been some discussion about maybe eliminating that. We can track that, as Gina described, through, you know, review of projects. But it's not something that's initially, you know, recognizable by someone coming in looking at a piece of property and says, oh, it's for sale, it's forty acres and it's zone R1. I can develop this. So we're sort of indifferent about keeping the XO now. I can see benefits. I can see how, you know, we're trying to sort of streamline things and make things less convoluted. And it's really more of a policy call for you guys as to what you think is best.
And you can do a cluster development now with a specific plan or a PD.
Right.
So depending on the scale of the project that we are trying to accomplish. So I think my impression, information in the letters, was that they were looking for us to identify parcels that we wanted to encourage cluster development on. I'm just not sure that we're in a position to facilitate.
I think we've already addressed that in the general plan. And I don't think we need to duplicate that in the zoning code. Because then we're identifying, you know, these specific parcels here are suitable for clustering and maybe not over here. We've already said that, that, you know, within the community regions and, you know, the spheres of influence nearby, those are appropriate. We don't necessarily want to see that out in the hinterlands as much.
It just seems to me that clustering is really a custom thing that depends on the fact that.
Right, right.
And also what some private developer might see as a good prospect. And I just, I don't, I don't see us sitting back now and saying, well, let's zone that cluster or RRZ or whatever it might be.
I mean, it's, you know, the number of policies that encourage it. It reduces infrastructure costs. There's all kinds of good reasons for it.
Yo, I'm all in favor of clustering in the abstract and in the particular in the right place.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see those facts arise.
On a case-by-case basis, this project come in, yes.
Well, there's no reason for us to try to tell people where they want to do it when they're going to make that decision, whether it's a personal decision or a financial decision. As long as we allow cluster development, which we do, and we've added lots of other things in the code to allow for different use of residential obstacles. I do feel like it would be great to be able to look at a map and see, oh, what is committed to open space? I just don't think it needs to be part of the zoning code. I think it's just something that would be really nice to have that, something we can work for.
Public comment?
Let's hear it.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, the reason we were looking to clarify that clustering will be done, you know, adjacent to existing communities as opposed to in the middle of nowhere. One of the supervisors expressed a great reluctance to allow conservation easements near communities. She wanted, she didn't want communities hemmed in by those. And we wanted to make it clear that that through clustering, we can still have, you know, reasonable development, transitional agricultural development adjacent to existing communities while also conserving some of the agricultural land. So we're just trying to clarify when clustering is available. If that's clear enough in the general plan, that's fine. The question I have, Gina suggesting that there's a way to pick up the publicly created conservation easements anyway when they're doing plan checks, if somebody comes in with a building permit or a zoning change or a subdivision, that the planner's going to pick that up.
No, I didn't say that.
No?
No, that actually, I think, came from Tim. Somebody suggested that staff was going to. No, those are, those are recorded documents. That what I'm talking about is, is recorded maps, notes on recorded maps. Our department, as well as everyone else in the county government center, has access to all the recorded subdivision maps, parcel maps, records of survey. Everything that has been recorded would, is available to us. We access those maps on a regular basis. And if we were doing some research as part of an application or an inquiry for a subdivision, we would first of all go to the recorded map, if there was one, that created the parcel in question. That would be one of the first things that we do. But I did not say that we would go do any title search and retrieve an actual recorded easement.
I think I said that.
I don't know. It came from some.
I know where it came from. As a policy, when the county is involved in a process that creates the need for that as part of a parcel, that we could try to document.
Yeah.
As a policy, not as zoning.
Yeah. So one thing we do get with a subdivision map application is a title report within the last twelve months. And we do come the title report for anything that we think that we need to, you know, be aware of. And so that too is part of the process. That title report gets transferred over to Public Works and the county surveyor. So there's lots of people that are looking at that document as well, in addition to the actual recorded map, if there is one previously.
I think that one, one reason that Tom might be bringing this up and other people have mentioned it is that sometimes when people come in with a single-family residence and it seems like there's no reason to dig. It's not, they're not looking to do development, you know. It's a sequel exempt project that that might not be looked at. And so somebody could potentially pull a building permit for a parcel that does have restrictions on it. But that is really a problem of the owner who does know whether or not they should be doing that.
And that's no different than CCNRs.
I also think that Doug Oliver does look to see if there's any restrictions before issuing a building.
Unless it's on the maps that quickly, that you can look. Not every single-family residence gets that level of scrutiny, I can assure you.
But again, that's, yeah.
Just don't look like there's anything that would bring your attention to it. Maybe that's something we need to be more careful about. That's a whole different thing. Maybe the owners have to provide something.
Well, there is a level of responsibility of the owner to provide us with adequate information. You know, just the same as we hold them responsible for adequacy of their site plans. You know, occasionally we catch something that's not right about a site plan and we'll point it out. But ultimately, it's their responsibility and it's their responsibility to locate property pins and string property boundaries so the building inspector can go out there and accurately, you know, be assured that they're not meeting, you know, that they're meeting setback requirements. So there is a level of responsibility that's placed back upon the owner that I think the county just can't ultimately be responsible for.
It certainly would be nice to be able to look.
Oh, absolutely.
Is it something we want to impose on the department now? I'm pretty sure, I heard everybody be very clear that they don't want to do that.
So basically, it's in our system now.
It has to be, yeah.
Well, no, it's okay. Great. It goes beyond that. If I, no, if I, if I, I could, if I don't, if I don't tell you about easement on my property, you don't know about it. No, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is we will look on that for building permits, for any development application submitted to planning. We will look at the information that's available. And all the easements are shown. You know, where the issue comes up is maybe a buyer of property doesn't realize there's some restriction or easement through the middle of the property that date is not disclosed by the seller or they just didn't bother to read the title report carefully. And then they come in later on. But we will pick that up with our review process.
But not, maps are not always updated to reflect an easement that an owner has created with, by just recording that easement document with a map with it.
Right. That would come up in the title report, though.
It would come up in the title, but if you're doing a single-family home.
Right.
I'm saying we can find places where you're going to miss it because you wouldn't know about it. And the conservation easement, if it was done as Tom was calling it, anonymously, you wouldn't necessarily know unless you're searching every recorded document. You're not just looking at a map. Anything you're looking at a map for, you would find.
Yeah. And when we have a required mitigation measure or condition of approval of a project, we're going to know about it. It's going to show up on our maps, on our information. And I would agree with you that if there is a way that we can publicize that better and make it more readily available to the general public, that's great, great information. Yep. And I think that the GIS team is doing a really outstanding job in getting that information out there.
There's one that's up all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's great. So I think what we're saying is we don't think this is the place to completely fulfill your wishes here, Tom. But we see, we understand the desire for the information.
Thank you. Thank you.
Me too.
Is number three? Yeah. Well, we're number three, but changes to administrative procedure section. This, Tom's paragraph under A brought me back to seventeen point two, seven point oh, four oh, which is on page one, seven, five. And I was surprised when I looked at that. That starts with, "The director shall determine whether an application is complete within thirty days of the date the application is filed and required to be received." I thought somewhere there was a provision that if the director does not do that in a timely fashion, it's considered complete. But I couldn't find that when I was looking at.
That's a requirement of the Permists Street Act, a state law. It doesn't need to be repeated in our code.
So it's state law that makes that.
Yes. And there are caveats to that, obviously. But we don't need to repeat state law in our code.
And then the same thing as far as the sixty days for appeals to be decided by the board and the, by the planning division and the board?
Yeah, that's state law.
Okay. Okay, well, then, I'm glad because I couldn't find it in here. Again, I'm concerned if we're adding additional duties onto the planning department, which, once we put that duty on, then if they don't satisfy the duty, just what we're opening up the county to as far as litigation and such.
Public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. You didn't cause this problem. The state caused this problem. The Housing Accountability Act created a new timeline for approvals. And the idea was, you know, some of these counties, you know, they string applicants along and then the board finally gets it, you know, an applicant, you know, a project one or two or three years down the line. And at the last minute says, I'm sorry, that's not consistent with the general plan. And we're denying you your subdivision, right? And so the state, you know, that's responsible. They don't want that happening anymore. So what they said is, within thirty days of determining that an application is complete for a housing project under one hundred and fifty-one units, that starts, the county has to, if it's consistent with the general plan, you don't have to do anything. But if it's inconsistent with the general plan, they have to issue a notice to the applicant explaining how it's inconsistent. So the applicant can go about, you know, amending the project and make it, let it go forward. We're, however, if they, if, so the problem is, by just sitting on that opportunity for thirty days, it expires. And the law says the county has to find that. and the law says the county has to find that project consistent with the general plan. So the problem is, well, to, to resolve this problem, what we would like to see is, okay, that application gets deemed complete and that may not be within the, you know, it may take a while to get it complete, right? There's new information, there's additional information asked for of the applicant. But once it's deemed complete, if you notice that, then if someone's got a problem with it, hey, say, "Hey, you know what? That's not consistent with these general plan provisions. Let's talk to the board supervisors, see what the board supervisors thinks and let the board make that decision within the thirty days," rather than it automatically by fiat having to find that it's consistent. I think, you know, I don't like the idea of, of, of a fictitional finding that the county might later be held responsible for. So our, our idea is, you know, put it on notice, give the board a chance to make that decision within the timeframe and then there's no problem.
I, I don't want to go into, some of this stuff is closed session things. I'm not going to be going into attorney-client. I think as we've, as you yourself said, Mr. Infasino, we don't have an affirmative duty to make a general plan consistency finding. If we do make a general plan consistency finding, you and other organizations would have the opportunity to challenge it. In this situation, we can do nothing if we think it's consistent and we are safer for that.
Sure.
And it's not like there, isn't anybody suing us over the general plan. So I think you can see our position.
No, I'm still seeing your position.
Okay.
If you think it's inconsistent, wouldn't you want to?
If it's inconsistent, if it's inconsistent, we would be telling the applicant as required by law that it was inconsistent, but we do not, I would, I am not going to recommend that we make affirmative general plan consistency findings that we are not required by law to make. Because a deemed approved remedy, if we get it wrong, is safer for us than the liability we would incur by being challenged on the general plan consistency finding.
So we also.
So you, so you don't have a problem, you don't have a problem?
I, I don't want to, I, I, I give, I shouldn't even be giving legal advice out loud, to be honest. I don't know that we need to, it's up to the commission whether they want to go through all of these and discuss these out loud, it's not a requirement, it's public comment.
So like, we have a process and we enhance that process with the zoning clearance, different product reviews for larger projects in advance, many opportunities for the applicant and landowner to get input on whether or not it appears to be consistent with the general plan. I don't think we need to add, it's my personal opinion, add steps to what is required above and beyond what the state requires.
I agree.
That's where I'm going to leave it.
Especially, yeah, especially, which is in the place of lying buildings.
I agree, we do not need it. And knowing that the state is constantly changing its law, we don't want to put something in the law and then we have to go amend our zoning code to comply with the state law again, we'll just, you know, we, we comply, we are, we have to comply with the state law. And whether it's in our code or not, we still have to abide by these. And so I would keep it to a minimum.
See, now boobs, I think we need to discuss peace and morals, does anybody?
We got the environmental review.
It's the same, it's the same issue.
Well, yeah, it's citing the general plan in, in the zoning code. I don't, I, I don't think we need to.
Yeah, I don't think we need to discuss, does anybody need to discuss that? Okay, so, next.
And I, that's just, it's certainly each and all, John, but.
Look off that.
Pass that, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
This is the appeals.
It seems to me that we're on full page four of the Infasino memo at the top of the page, letter D, letter D. I think we already, in our prior discussions on page one eighty-two, I think we've taken care of this. Because there was a, there was a, it read as if there, we could be looking at what was before the planning, the planning director. And we clarified it, so the exhaustion administrative remedies is, starts with the planning commission. No issue that was not addressed during the planning commission year, et cetera. I, I think, I think those have been put in.
Right, we talked, yes. At least we discussed this and I thought we adjusted the language to take care of it. So that when the public didn't know about it, there was no noticing, there was no opportunity for them to bring forth an issue. So of course they can bring it up at the appeal.
Right.
It wasn't brought up during the ministerial action because they had no opportunity to bring it up.
Well, I, I, there's a constitutional, I think our constitution is clear. Anybody can call a public, I mean, that's, they can't make a public comment even if they didn't know about the lower hearing.
But as I. No, we're saying when there was no lower hearing, it was a decision made by the planning director. That's what we're talking about.
And what is it that you're?
So then it's appealed and when, and the, the standard laws, you can't bring up a new issue that wasn't brought up at the original hearing.
Director.
Yes, exactly. So of course they get to bring it up at the next, so, yeah.
I think we.
But it did not change the planning, what do we have, planning?
Right, no, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about something that the planning director might not have heard before, yes.
The asphalt plant decision, is what I'm saying.
Yes, to bring back.
For the gun rage.
And actually, I think there's language in here that the planning director's consideration might be considered a hearing, but not a public hearing.
Right. Yeah, we, we, so that's well addressed, I think.
Yep.
Changes to a mitigation measure as a major amendment to an approved plan development.
I, I don't see a problem with that. Page, page two oh eight.
I admit, occasion and measure under CEQA, yeah. Not just a condition, that's what we're talking about.
Right, right.
So, Julie and Peter, do you have any thoughts on this one? Just, just that a CEQA required mitigation measure couldn't be considered just a, a minor amendment to an approved project?
I, I agree, that's the position I've always taken is that if a proposed modification to a project affects any mitigation measure, any condition of approval that would affect an adjacent property owner or, you know, public right of way or something like that, that's not a minor amendment. That has to come back through.
So we just need to make sure we may clarify that if we need to in the wording.
The wording that's proposed in Infasino memo is, "Any change to a mitigation measure adopted as part of the plan development approval." To me, "Adopted" could be referring back to change or to mitigation measure somehow. I thought it was clearer if it said, "Any change to a mitigation measure that was adopted."
What, what, what section are we referring to here?
Seventeen thirty-six oh seven oh is what he's saying.
On page two oh eight.
Yeah.
So this is just specific to plan developments?
Yeah.
Well.
An PD overlay zone or PD plan.
Right.
I think some of the confusion, I just, there's a separate process for like billing purposes, for application purposes, where the planning department has to figure out if it's a, like a minor modification or major modification. I'm not sure that when this was drafted, it looked, it was dovetailing with how those are defined for what fee is paid in the department, right? The, the minor or major modification.
I guess.
We could just add this as an item seven and everybody agrees.
Right, I think so.
It might, so, there's likely often changes in mitigation measures of when you actually get in and maybe the mitigation measure was pretty specific and then when you actually go in and, and do it, the nature of the environment or the creek or something, you take a little bit of a different approach. So you might add like substantively alters the mitigation measure, otherwise, you know, some.
I'm going to think what you're looking for is something that would, I mean, you have to look under CEQA to what extent, there's a lot about whether you would, are actually simply implementing a mitigation measure versus whether you're changing one. And that's probably more complicated than we're going to probably want to draft around. So, I mean.
Public comment?
No, thank you, not right now. Let them finish their discussion, Martha, enjoy, go ahead.
Okay, I would, so I would just, you could just say any, I mean, I, again, if you're, you're, you're either implementing the mitigation measure or you're changing it. And if you're implementing it, you're not changing it. And so I think just saying changing a mitigation measure with, you know, you could say within the meaning of CEQA and that's fine.
Yeah. So we also should look at seventeen twenty-seven one two oh on page, I have page one eighty-one, it could be a different page, where it defines a minor revision and a major revision, have the effect of modifying a mitigation measure under CEQA. And this applies to all development projects, where we're just talking about PDs in seventeen thirty-six. So I think it's already covered.
Okay.
They're under one two O B, seventeen twenty-seven one two zero B.
What was your page number?
Um, one eighty-one. One eighty-one is the document that I have, it could be one eighty-one two.
It is close.
It'll get you close.
Revisions to approve permit.
Yes, that's on one eighty, with one eighty-one, what I have.
Well, then in that case, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that is covered. As, as a major revision, have the effect of modifying a mitigation measure under CEQA. Somebody was good and put that in.
Yep, I think that was me.
Sorry, you have a sub.
It was a team effort.
We don't need that in.
Well, or we can, we can say, but it's not, it's, it's going to apply no matter what.
Yeah, okay.
So, kinder and gentler code.
Now, before we get to that, in the Zeller memo, there's a reference to something on page two thirty about co-housing. It does not have a parallel section in Infasino. And I think she raises a good point as far as our, the definition that's proposed for co-housing seems to be more restrictive than the common, commonly understood. And it's talked about small, small homes, et cetera. And I would just, I'd ask the planning department and Martha to take a look at, at what the Zeller memorandum says and, and let us know.
Well, and co-housing could be a multi-family, single structure. I mean, it can be all sorts of different things in different places. I, I would agree that we could probably improve the definition.
So that definition is taken straight from your housing element? So that was the definition that you all gave that?
We probably shouldn't monkey with it then.
Well, set that we, I don't think that we would want to limit it to this, we could expand.
I guess my only question, is it a term of art in our, I mean, is it, I don't know.
Co-housing has it, has it.
Has a legal definition and so you would probably want me to research it against.
Well, I would go to like, there's several co-housing groups and see how they define co-housing and then see if we can drive that up with the legal definition. But more flexibility is certainly better.
And let it reviver it by the housing.
I don't think it limits it so much, it's, it was trying to provide an opportunity for a variety of housing types and co-housing. And I've seen all, all kinds of different models of co-housing.
And they've certainly, those models continue to expand.
And truly more of an ownership type of arrangement than it is a land use development type.
Right.
So I, I don't think it's critical, but I would agree that maybe we, we could review the definition and maybe refine it somewhat.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. I appreciate that, that Zeller brought this up. Now I think we're the kinder.
I just have to say, I don't think it's appropriate to talk about the code enforcement under Title VIII, which is where we do it. That is in the purview of the building department. And I would, Doug Oliver would need to be a part of the conversation. And I don't think, I think what we're trying to do here, and I think what the board would like us to do, is centralize it into a single code and we already have a code for, for code enforcement.
I'm also not sure that a lot of what's in here is something to be codified versus a policy of giving people opportunities to correct their.
Well, they're, I mean, there is a requirement already in state law that we give an opportunity to correct and then people get upset that we give too much opportunity to correct. So, but again, the, again, I don't think the board of supervisors is going to want to address code enforcement and the zoning code update.
I just don't think any of this really, is very feels with it, not necessarily appropriate to the zoning code.
I agree.
Anybody else? Okay, back to, was it, was it else?
I don't know what we have for.
But I think that we are down to the end here. Let's look at our list one more time. Let's, let's go back one more time.
Yes, you did it all, folks, we appreciate it.
Yes, I know, look, you come back and all of a sudden.
Well, I wish I could take credit for that, but it's Martha and Gina who's done all the work.
So is there anything, Martha or Gina, that you think you need input on? Or would, do you want to go back to your offices and take a look at where we're at and see if you need clarifications on something and we can do those right after our hearing tomorrow?
That would, that would be great if you see hangups or snags from, instead of just having you go back and do the whole thing and then we look it over and stamp it. If you see particular snags, it would be great if we could have a prefatory look at that.
I don't, I don't know if you've got any questions after today. I mean, Martha and I meet pretty regularly and go through everything that's happened after the.
I think.
Well, you were really well prepared today with the things from our last meeting, so.
What was it earlier that you asked if they could come back tomorrow?
It was the animal keeping, whole production. And, and I just thought anything else that arose today that when you started to actually try to do it, it seemed like, oh, no, that doesn't make that greater sense.
Did you finish wireless communication?
We did.
All night probably, one break there?
Yep.
Yes. We actually did pretty well.
But you were gone the night of the group.
Yes.
I have a question.
See, this will be the final draft.
Unless we see-
Well, we might see a couple little things tomorrow, but you're, you won't be here, so, you will see. Yeah.
I have a question, did, did, did we decide that, about the X suffix? Or, uh, or did we decide that they're just going to make notations on the maps?
Well, the code currently requires notations on the maps, so those, those have already been made.
I didn't quite hear the, are you talking about the X overlay, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah, whether we're getting rid of it completely, or whether we're keeping it for, getting rid of it, okay, thank you.
No, the proposal is to eliminate it, yes.
All right. If nobody has anything else there, are there any commissioner reports, guys want to tell us about what kind of fun you had today?
Well, we'll just reiterate that we're ready to approve the minutes the next time we're all together. Finally, within, what, three months?
To these guys for getting us caught up, so on the twenty-fifth, we will be catching them all.
And as far as commissioner report, just to welcome back Peter Mauer.
Yeah, absolutely, so-
Your contributions were great today.
I'll just remind the commissioner that I will be away on the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth?
If, if that's the date that we're going to reconvene to review the, uh-
Four twenty-four?
Yeah.
No after?
That's Wednesday, right?
Yeah, you, you won't-
I won't be doing any Wednesdays, so maybe we'll just kind of like, do you want to go over the next, the upcoming schedule then, so?
Sure, next thing is really the planning director report, so I'm sure you guys would like to tell us about the schedule.
So, um, obviously, we're not going to need Wednesdays anymore, right? So, um, is there anything else you want to see before Martha and I put together the final edits and bring back to you prior to the hearing that we will, you will be taking action, the final draft?
I think that, that's really, as far as I've got to, and that's, that's up to you and Martha and Peter. If you see, as I was saying earlier, if you see particular things that might have a snag.
So, at this point, if we don't see any of those snags, are you comfortable with us putting together the final document, wrapping it all up, and bringing it back to a noticed public hearing for your consideration?
I don't know how I, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think so.
Just as long as you're not expecting to see the whole thing one more time.
No, we're expecting to see it one more time when we're ready to have the final discussions on it with the public here. So, it would be nice to have that document, uh, with as much time for us to read through it as-
That is my plan, so we do, I still have some work to do with the zoning map, um-
You haven't even seen that.
No, you haven't seen that yet, um, it's, it's, it's been in process, and things have changed, and now they're going to change even more, because we keep making, you know, decisions to eliminate and go back, and let's put this, so anyway, um, I have to spend some time and go through that to make sure that what, you know, what we've got, um, right now is really, I know that I'm going to have to modify it yet some more, so that's going to consume a little bit of time for me, but we have to bring the map back with the text amendment, so.
It would be very helpful to me if when we are making our final review, the actual draft that we're looking at shows the changes that have occurred since the last time you did a draft.
I don't, I do not need that. But let's, let's have to, but maybe we could have both.
So, you're saying you want a final track change version?
Maybe you could do, yeah, what's, and just indicate, maybe you can give us two copies. One is the final college.
You want me to print you two copies?
Would you want, everything that's been changed?
No, 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 just-
We don't have to have, maybe just, maybe we'll remain changes?
That, that would be fine, between this draft and the next one we get, changes that were made because of the discussions that have happened after this draft, and I don't want to, I wouldn't want to see all the changes indicated.
I, we can, we can do that, we'll figure out a way to get that to you, maybe you just make it available to those who want it.
That'd be fine.
And just electronic would be fine for me.
Me too.
Yeah.
Electronic.
Save a tree.
Yes, there were several.
I, I'm very much looking forward to the clean copy that looks very official, and I, and I just wanted to say that it's very reassuring, these last few meetings, that when we talk about, well, we did that before, I think I remember we did that, takes us well to find it, but it's covered in here, which I was starting to feel like maybe I've lost track of everything, but it's very reassuring to see that you guys have really taken care of so much stuff already.
Do we have any update on the cell tower? When's that coming back to us, I wonder?
Vertical bridge.
Yeah, it's when they come back.
Okay, we haven't heard anything.
I was going to say, isn't it when they come back?
Yeah, they needed to, but they haven't yet, I guess.
They haven't come back to you with anything.
No, not that I'm aware of, yeah, I think that would have been a topic of discussion amongst the three of us. But this has been a good week, we have Catherine back on staff, we've got Peter, so we're-
I'm also getting letters objecting to a cellphone tower up Highway four and Gansbado area.
Are you, is, are you, are we getting those as well?
I'm getting them.
If you're, if you're getting those, and you're not sure that we've gotten them, can you forward those?
We have multiple applications in process, um, as far as I understand from that.
I don't know what we've got, but I honestly am not reviewing any of those applications.
Multiple people, so, I, okay. I just was, I actually had been contacted about that one before as the scenic byway representative, not with, with the, from the cellphone designer, you know, they had sent a bunch of stuff and asked for comments.
Is that on federal land?
I didn't comment on it.
Is it on federal land?
No, it's on, in a residential car, so a buddy in the-
Can you do us a favor, Michelle, and forward those, I'm assuming you've gotten an email?
The other one was just, was a preliminary thing that was sent to, uh, it was, came via Caltrans, I think. I'm on that Caltrans contact list, so, but the letter, there's one letter that's definitely objecting to it, and I just didn't know where-
So, if you guys get those, and you're uncertain as to whether or not they've been forwarded to our department, if you could just send a courtesy, you know, email to Annette, then she'll take care of it as, you know, as needed?
Yeah, I just, I, I had asked about it a long time ago, and it wasn't even on your guys' radar, but apparently, it has actually come through the process now.
I don't know, we've got a lot of cell towers.
I have three, and three that I need to work with Matty, I'm ready.
Okay, so, so, no big deal, I'm not testing anything out of the ordinary. Okay, well, unless somebody wants to add anything, we're going to adjourn this meeting and continue this discussion to tomorrow's meeting after our regularly-aged agenda is tied up.
As needed?
See y'all back at nine AM tomorrow.
And then when is your next meeting, then, on the fourth?
Twenty-fifth?
If we have something on the, there's two items?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
So, we'll have a regular agenda on, what'd you say that was, the twenty-third?
Say the twenty-fifth.
Coming soon.
Yeah.
Congratulations, everybody.
Welcome back here.